We will now call the March 17, 2021 City Council Meeting to Order. There was no closed session, so we're not reconvening, and no report of actions. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mayor Pro Tem Newton. Yeah, up, hang on.
Mayor Bash will need to call roll.
Okay, I know, we're all here. Sorry.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremeyer?
Here.
Councilmember Alamon?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Newton?
Here.
Mayor Bash?
Here.
We're all present.
We're all present. You know, this is my third time being mayor, you'd think I'd have it right by now. Now, Mr. Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. Please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will remain standing. Who's our pastor tonight? Oh, looks like, come aboard, I'm happy to see you.
Thank you.
Up, Daniel. You know, I can't, I don't know who anybody is because he's masked. Yes, we can.
Okay, let's pray. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. We thank you because our nation recognizes God, for in God we trust. And in the name of Jesus, we want to lift our leaders who are gathered here tonight to deliberate the murders of this city. We pray that you are going to grant our leaders wisdom to be able to lead this city into greater prosperity. Let peace and tranquility prevail in our city in the name of Jesus. We pray for breakthroughs in this city. We pray that you would heal our city as you heal our nation. In the name of Jesus, we thank you that you are going to give our leaders strength, protection to the work you have called them to serve this city to and for the glory of God. We thank you tonight, committing all the proceedings for tonight, that everything will be wholesome, for and to the glory of God. We thank you, we bless the name of the Lord, and let your name be glorified, for it is in the precious name of our Lord Jesus Christ we pray. Amen and amen.
Thank you, Pastor. So, we're going to take a moment to honor a couple of people. One, a very longtime commissioner who I've actually served with several times. She couldn't make it here tonight. I've been presented with about five lists which sort of match my own. Corinne Holder. Corinne lived in Norco 23 years, married to Jim Holder, has two kids. I've known them all since they were little tiny ones. And she couldn't be here tonight because they've moved out of Norco. Served on the Parks and Trails, open spaces, Parks and Rec Commission, had worked very hard youth, adult sports, private sports advisory committee, senior services committee, recreation leisure programs committee, volunteer committee, special events committee. She served on National Day of the Cowboy, organizing that, Horsedown Parade of Lights and Christmas Festival, Best of America by Horseback, multiple concerts and movies in the park, and the Fourth of July event. She's a member of the Norco Animal Rescue Team, Ad Hoc Committee on Infrastructure Needs, was very instrumental in passing Measure R, again, staple volunteer, Horse Week, Norco Fair, Norco Horsemen's Association, CFR Rodeo, and the Santa Ana River Master Plan, just to name a few things. I also served with her on the Measure GG Board or Oversight Committee for the school district. Corinne is one of those people that I thought would live and die in Norco, and they just got an opportunity that was too good to pass up, and they decided to move. So tonight, I just want to take a moment just to give a big shout out to Corinne and wish her the best. They're in Arizona tonight, and we have these really, these new things that we'll get to her that are just really nice. Kelly Newton designed them. And then, secondarily, we lost, we lost a true member of the Norco family recently to COVID. And high school, Norco High School graduate. And I gave a call to Karen Spiegel and to another supervisor, Jeff, and I asked if maybe they could do something to honor some sort of a memorial resolution to Terry Prokowski. Terry was tough, man, but I'll tell you, every year he would do this incredible thing where he would collect toys. His entire Public Works team would collect toys. And the first time he introduced it to me, I said, you know, what can I do for the guys? I wanted to send them pizza or something. He goes, well, we collect toys. And he took me into the office over on Fifth Street, and I was shocked at this pile of toys, and that Terry Prokowski, tough old Terry, was like a puddle when he talked about all these toys, and he couldn't wait to give them out. So, I'm going to go ahead and read this. On motion of Supervisor Spiegel, seconded by Supervisor Hewitt, and duly carried by unanimous vote, it was ordered that the meeting of Tuesday, March 2, 2021, be adjourned in memory of Terrence Terry Michael Prokowski, who passed away at the age of 53, January 16, 2021, due to COVID-19. Terry was born on September 27, 1967. He was a longtime resident of Norco. He began working with the city in 1986 as a part-time meter reader. He served for the last few years as the City of Norco Public Works Superintendent. Terry was the go-to guy for problems ranging from major water leaks to potholes. With a minuscule budget, he got an extraordinary amount of work done for the residents. In Terry's honor, the Norco Service Yard has been named in his name, so his service to the community will not be forgotten. Terry's memory and passionate spirit will live forever in the hearts of those who knew him and loved him. He will be deeply missed but never forgotten. The Board of Supervisors commemorates his service to the County of Riverside. It was further ordered that the Board of Supervisors expresses its heartfelt condolences to the family of Terrence Terry Michael Prokowski. That kind of says it all. As I said in the last meeting, you know, we normally, when it's non-COVID, we have a lot of fun, and our newest member of the council made mention to me, she said, you know, we should do this, and this, and this, and this. And I said, God, it's kind of tough, because, you know, normally, we have a lot of fun, and we honor people, and we point people out. And when I got home, I got to thinking, I thought, man, she's right, we've got to, we've got to carry this on. So one of the things we came up with is to honor people during COVID and before COVID who have done great service to the community of Norco. And there's a lot of them, but there's a lot of them also that just stick out, that just were always crossing paths. So tonight, and each council person will pick the person that they feel, on this given night, that they would like to honor. So I'm going to direct Mayor Pro Tem Newton to tell us his selection.
On the red side of the graphic, Mayor Holder.
Right there, good.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to talk a little about our Community Spirit Award. This evening, the mayor and the city council would like to recognize Mike Jones and the team from Compare Carpets for their outstanding community service in the city of Norco. Mike and Compare Carpets are responsible for an amazing secret Santa event each year that blesses families less fortunate with a Christmas that they may not have had. They have helped more than 30 families in the community since 2015 to have a better Christmas and holiday season. $7,979 to date has been provided through our schools here in Norco. Checks were presented to families by the principals of the schools right before the Christmas break. Compare Carpets raised funds all year with their amazing barbecues, which we all seem to enjoy, and have raised over $50,000 since they started. They have inspired others to help out their neighbors. Brian Feher?
Fear.
Fear, I like that. Is a local youth in our community, raised over $2,000 for the Children's Hospital of Orange County Hospital by collecting recyclables, just because he saw what Mike Jones and Compare Carpets does for our community. Our community is a better place with people like this to care and to support their fellow neighbors. Join me in a round of applause for Mike Jones and Compare Carpets for all that they do and give back to this community. So what I'd like to do now, Mike, is just read this certificate. The Norco City Council recognizes and appreciates your dedication to community service, and there's also this limited edition pin, okay, that will be a collector's item very soon. So I'd like to present that to you, and it's just an absolute pleasure to know you and to work with your guys and all you do for the community. So if you'd like to say a few words, and try to remember you're not at a construction site?
I really, all I want to say is a thank you to the city council. They've been to all five of our barbecues and gotten a VIP table. The $500 VIP tables is just another avenue to raise money, and that's 50 grand net. We've never taken anything out, and that's gone. For the first three years was immunotherapy research, and then the last two was directly to Jack's oncologist at CHLA for blood and bone marrow childhood cancer research. So a thank you to all of you. Berwin's not here. I could tell you some funny stories at the judges table about Berwin. I could honestly make you guys laugh for like 30 minutes, just on, just Berwin alone of stories. I'll give you one. At Donna's event at No Drama Ranch, I ran, no, I'm sorry, it was at Compare, at Compare. I go by the judges table real quick, check in with Robert Bash, who's Robert Bass, who's a master, he's a Kansas City Master Judge for the KCBS, he's guided us all these events. So and he always sits next to Berwin. So as I'm running by, I check in, how's it going? Robert looks at me and goes, Mike, did you taste this? And I said, no. He goes, I wouldn't serve this to a dog. I tasted it, it was too hot, it's very spicy. And before I said anything, Berwin said, maybe a dog that barks too much, and then I just lost it. Like, that's, like, perfect, right? At Donna's event at No Drama, the last guy was late, and so I had already called, hey, judges table, everybody get your, get your tickets in, or, you know, cast your vote, judges, judging's over. And I look out in the parking lot, and there's Chubbs Barbecue, who's now Danny Slim, I can't remember the name of their team now. Judges, stop, we got one more. Berwin just looked at me like, it was, he'd had seven, you know, eaten barbecue for an hour. I could tell stories by him. But my point is of thank you to the city council, always supporting our barbecues. Greg had it a little bit backwards, we give away carpet remnants all year long, and barbecue once a year. COVID stole our 2020 barbecue. But I want to recognize this guy, Brian Fear. He's not a super sibling, he doesn't have a brother or sister battling cancer. His third grade teacher last year said, hey, here's a school project, random act of kindness. So he cleaned up his part of Glamis as they're on a weekend, and said, okay, well, this isn't trash, this is recyclables. Turned that in, then said, what are we doing with the money, Mom? And Mom says, what do you want to do? Well, let's give it to Chalk, just, just because. To me, that's, that's a spirit award. So I told Greg the story. We took over 100 bucks to his house the other day, and I'm in the parking lot, or in her driveway, and I'm writing, thank you so much for what you've done for Chalk, Mark, Joel, Rod, Jay, Mike, just an envelope. And she comes out the door and sees this random car in her driveway, and she's, can I help you? Roll down the window, it's Mike Ch- runs out, so what are you doing here? Give her the thing, 100 bucks, and she starts crying, and it put her over the, she goes, Brian, this puts over the $2,000 mark, and that's why I, it's just, I went from, who is this guy in my parking lot, like, what are you doing, to... They attended Gavin's parade. Remember Gavin from Norco? Who, okay, so I texted her mom, their mom, said, hey, Compare's decorating our trucks and my car, and would you want to? Damn, they're at Compare in an hour decorating their car. And to me, that's, they're not Norco, they're Corona, but we're still a big family, right? And of the 2,000 bucks that he's talking about, are you still listening? Can you hear? Do you have audio? You do have audio. So, where was I? Oh, so it was Norco, because a lot of the cans that were collected at Compare were obviously Norco residents, so, I mean, we collected a lot of cans and bottles at Compare, but because of this guy, he's, yeah, you're not Norco, but you're part of the family, buddy, right? See that smile? It's kind of cool. So I'm just, I'm stoked that you got to see this, Brian, because guess what? I'm taking this, I'm going to stick your name onto this. I'm keeping the pin, though, okay? I'm keeping the pin. Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We appreciate this. And Mark and Joel said thank you also. Yep, thanks. Oh, yeah, pick, oh, it's going to pick like this, hang on, that'd be funny. All right, we'll talk to you soon.
All right, moving on to City Council Communications Reports on Regional Boards and Commissions. We'll begin with Mayor Pro Tem Newton.
So March 4, I attended the Special Board of Directors meeting for the Chino Basin Salter. And what a small item, I'd like to report that our overall assessments for this past year were $30 million, $30,400,000, which resulted in an overpayment of $4,700,000. So we had a couple of options before us, and that was to refund a portion, $1,600,000, and allocate the additional $3 million to surplus to fund the Chino One GAC project. Or option two, to return the entire surplus of $4.7 million to all member agencies. So on the direction of the board, we chose option number one, which will be able to give us just a little bit of pin money back. So Norco share, we're about 3% of that amount, so we'll be getting a check back for $25,700. I'm sure we can find some good use for that. And then, on March 8, attended a meeting with Mayor Bash, City Manager Okoro, and Assembly Member Cervantes. And I will leave that, the rest of that report to you, Kevin. Okay? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Alamon?
Yes, I have nothing to report regarding committees or agencies that I serve on at this time. For other community things that I'm doing and working on, you can check my social media.
Robin?
Nothing to report.
Well, from the last meeting, I felt like I was back in school. I spent a week long at the Virtual American Mosquito Control Association Conference as part of the Northwest Mosquito Vector Control Training, a lot of hours. And I tell you what, all across the country, there are people out there trying to solve the mosquito problems that are associated with the little buggers. I'm really impressed with the group out of Coachella. They did a lot of presentations, so I get to, for you teachers, I get to give a report tomorrow afternoon at our meeting. So each one of us that went there, what we did. I attended the Western Community Energy Meetings. We had a couple of them with the WRCOG staff and the WCE chairman, and then also, we had that following week, we had the Western Community Energy Meeting, and I gave you, the council members, the minutes on that. There'll be more coming out as we go through. And then, as we went through, met with the animal control, you know, with losing Corinne, we also lost our, she was one of our emergency response coordinators, so met with the animal control staff to figure out what we're going to do and get some updates on that part of it. As far as Riverside County Transportation Commission, they're putting the final touches on the express lanes, and we expect them to open soon. And for those of you that utilize that, I would suggest you go on to the Riverside County Transportation webpage and follow links to Express 91, you'll get your pass and for that. It's going to open, it should, I don't want to use a date, because like Ann over there tells me, if you use a date and it's wrong, you're going to get yelled at, so it, they're hoping at least around the 1st of April or around that time. Couple of updates on the construction, the eastbound, for those commuters, the eastbound 91, the southbound 15 connector, during travel, it's going to be reduced to one lane. And I try to, the Hamonah Bridge is also part of that, and so please, I know the city's good about posting those things up because of this road at night, they're doing detours and stuff, so just kind of pay attention to that. I know Andy's crew's good about posting it. And then I got my orientation meeting with One Water, One Watershed. And Greg, you'll like this, they agree that their whole point in this, we had a long discussion with the New Sapa Director and the One Water, One Watershed Director. They agree with us that we need to regenerate our water, our aquifers, and the, again, find a better use for our reclaimed water than just shoving it down the river and hit the dam and out to the ocean. So we'll see what happens of that as it goes through. I'm eager to work with it, and not only represent Norco in that, I represent every city in Riverside County that borders that San Ana River and those that draw from its resources. So I am your Riverside County representative on that board. And then on the George Ingalls Veterans Memorial Meeting, those are updates to the Gold Star Family Monument. We were, we started, and Brian knows full well, that we thought we could do a lot, and then the people that we are connected with, the Woody Williams Foundation, they've got some new rules on it, on what we can and can't do, so, but we're fine, we're fine. And that, our grand opening, I'm hoping that by the end of September, we will have a ceremony up there for that, the Gold Star Families. That's our goal. Yes, March 16, council member Gremeyer, myself, met up at George Ingalls Park, part of the Master Plan Committee regarding the sound facilities, making up the new sound up there, and along with the other members of the committee. Some of that was approved in our Measure R, so now we're trying to figure out what we're going to do with it. And then, it's not on there, but today, we had an art call-out, and I want to, we went to Harupa Valley, I know it's not in Norco, but I want to appreciate what we did is we utilized the Memorandum of Understanding we have with the Riverside County Animal Services, and they were able to utilize us. Berwin and myself went out there, along with Melvin and one of his staff members, and we got out there, we were ready to put the tripod up and pick this horse up, because the vet said they've been working on it, couldn't get her up, couldn't get her up. Well, once we got her, it's a 28-year-old horse, and so once we got her out of her small corral, and we put her on the sled, got her out into a little more open ground, and she went, when I was putting her on the sled, and she kicked me, and I figured, you know what? You got enough gumption, let's get her up. So we got her up without the tripod, and it's a good, good deal. And I appreciate the work that we have been doing, as hopefully we've resumed that training we've done with the Riverside County Animal Control Officers, because they appreciate what we do, and the training they've gotten from us, and I appreciate their help and their willingness to learn. It's nice to have people that want to get out there, because, as you know, most of our team members are like me, we're getting old, and so it's nice to have some young people help us. And that's it, Mr. Newton. And that's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
The meeting with Assembly Member Cervantes went very, very well. She was actually very impressed, and correct me if I'm wrong, she was very impressed with Norco's plan to find additional housing. She was also, I think, impressed with the fact that we have the four-city alliance speaking against SB 9, which most of you now know was pulled. SB 9 was the lot-splitting whereby the Sacramento would just basically erase your zoning laws and on any lot, you could just split it, put another house. Ironically, the author of that bill was surprised at the pushback. And two of the staunchest members, I was actually very offended by their comments claiming we were just a bunch of nimby's, as if we hadn't done zoning in the city of Norco and all cities for decades. You gotta go through the process. I don't know if they understand that. League of Cities General Meeting, WRCOG Admin Finance, Ted already touched on Blue Gold Star Monument Construction. The Small Business Forum is through WRCOG. And one of the things I don't think people quite understand, and you kinda have to be in business and sign the front of a paycheck. I got together with the Corona City Council, or Corona Chamber of Commerce, Norco Chamber of Commerce, WRCOG, and we are going to have a forum on how small businesses are being slammed. A lot of the laws that are coming out will kill hundreds of businesses, probably thousands in the state of California. Payroll taxes, things that they're coming up with have no, there's no understanding about what this does to people that have 50 or less employees. So, we're gonna have quite a forum on that. And then, I had a Silver Lakes Update Session, which in a couple of weeks, I will share with you. The RCA Executive Meeting, I sent this to City Council, but for those of you that are interested, the Riverside Conservation Authority has a new website, and what you can do is you can actually go to the map section and look at it interactively to see how much land we've saved, habitat land we've saved. Really, really extraordinary. And that's about it, that's all I have. So, we'll move on to City Council Consent Item. I have to do a little housekeeping here. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and may be enacted by one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or the audience request specific items be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three of the agenda. Who would like to pull items? Greg is G.
Mr. Mayor, I would also like to pull G, and I as Nida.
Catherine? Robin?
Item F, please.
I'm going to pull D, F, and J. Is there anybody from the audience that wishes to speak on this?
We have no, received no comments for consent calendar, thank you.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve those that haven't been, that were not pulled?
I'll make a motion to approve the remaining items.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Alamon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Let's move to Greg, item G.
D.
If you see D.
You said D?
D.
Oh, you did.
Oh, I was gonna go last, but I can go first, that's fine. All right.
It's in order.
All right, well, I'll go in order, fine. So, D, Acceptance of Bids and Contracts for Ingalls Park. I just, I'm just curious how that's going and when that'll happen, and once this is approved.
Once this is approved, then we'll start the demo right away. The contractor has 10 days to put his bid bonds together and insurance and get contracts back to us, and then we'll issue notice to proceed. The project requires completion in 30 days.
And then, do you have a timeline as to when we can start the new construction we've proposed?
We're preparing, and then we'll be out to bid, or doing a design build on this. So, this is one step in that. We are very close. We just reviewed our electrical plans last week, and so, we're pretty close to pushing this out.
Wow, this is really, really, I just wanted an update, so, thank you. I have nothing more on this. Somebody else have a comment on this? Okay, do we take this each one at a time? So, I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Yes.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Robin, you pulled F.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question regarding the total dollar amount allocated, and the remaining balance is approximately $298,000. And with that balance that's remaining, would include the installation of the new resurfacing as well at four separate parks? So, is that enough money to complete the projects? And how do you know that?
Based on our estimates and looking at the equipment and our research prior to this with contractors and looking at this through the manufacturer, that's how we arrived at our numbers. And that includes also removal. So, that's demo, removal, installation, pour-in-place, and we require a third-party inspection at the end for certification.
That third-party inspection, is that gonna be one of our city staff that's qualified to do that, or it has to be someone else?
Our superintendent is certified. However, we require a third-party, one for that particular, we look at it as a transfer of potential liabilities or whatever with that. So, what happens is, in this case, the contractor puts that in his bid, and then, from that, we then, we get to select who he provides to us. If we don't do, not recognize that person, we can ask him to submit a list of others.
Okay. And what would happen potentially if this, if the bids come back in excess of the dollar amount that's been allocated?
If the bids came back in excess of this, then we would go back and request additional funding for Measure R to fund the balance of what would be shortfall.
And what would be the potential timeline or holdup if that were the case?
Well, we have a meeting in April with Measure R, so that's not really too far away. We are already out to bid on this project right now, so...
So, you would have the numbers by April?
Yeah, I'm hoping that I would have, I definitely would have the numbers by our Measure R, next Measure R meeting, so...
Okay, thank you.
But we feel pretty good about where our numbers are, so...
Let me clarify very quickly here. I think we kinda wanna get this straight, that when a contract is above the budget that was approved by Measure R Committee, we don't actually take that back to them to get additional appropriation. That is a decision that needs to be made by the City Council. The purpose of Measure R is primarily to help evaluate projects. The appropriations, part of it is a City Council item. So, we won't be going back if that was to be the case, we won't be going back to Measure R.
I also pulled this. I was actually shocked at the deal you got, because I'm going through this right now, and it was also kinda sad that a couple of these I put together when I was on the commission. And I can't believe they're aging out. Is this, this is prevailing wage, correct, or is it?
Oh, yes, it is. But we are purchasing from CMAS schedules, so we're piggybacking on the state bid. So, we're actually getting a better price. Now, if you look at my numbers, we actually even got a lower price than what CMAS is, because Mirco discounted some additional thorough negotiations with them on this. So, we actually, I think for what we're getting, we really got a big bang for our buck.
I think you did amazing.
And these are a little different, if you look at the schematics, because we're actually putting shade covers on this, which is, which sometimes can be more, quite a bit more to the number, but we really did a pretty good job. I gotta give Todd and his team credit for that, they did a good job of working on this project, so...
And then, how'd you work the deal for the surfacing you're using?
Basically, on that, we specked out a particular pour-in-place, and actually, the pour-in-place that we are using for this is out of Corona, actually. And it used to be SpectraTurf, but now it's Max Pro, so it's, they've changed names. But they're one of the leaders in this, so we've...
Yeah, they're doing ours, too, but did you, did you get the olefatic, or did you get the lesser binder?
We have the higher binder one, and this includes, now, I...
I didn't see olefatic, but I saw the binder one, so I wasn't sure if that was...
Yeah, I don't know if I have it, but I do have the specs on that, if you wanna see them. But it, we're pretty satisfied with it in color schemes and what we came up with. We actually, our commission put a lot of time in this, too. We have a subcommittee that worked on this, and then our own commission spent time on this particular project with staff.
Well, in my opinion, you got a great deal. I was really surprised, I was going through the numbers, and I was like, wow. Anyway, Robin, anything else? Anybody? I make a motion, oh, go ahead, please, Catherine.
No, I just wanna say, as a mother of several young children, we are at parks all the time, so this is welcome for those of us who are out in our parks. These parks I go to on a regular basis, and I will, my kids will be very happy, I know our youth will be happy to be out there, to be playing, to have shade. So, thank you to the staff and the commission for all their work on this.
Motion to approve? Go ahead, second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Councilmember Grunmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman? Mayor Protem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Greg, G.
Thank you, Kevin. Brian, just some clarification on this item, that, kinda wondering why, being on consent, it looks to me the recommendation, we have two choices to make on this. And that's what kinda threw me with being on the consent calendar. Item number one is reject the bids or not reject the bids and reject the first three bidders as non-responsive. So, I wanted to take away the choice, or should this been moved as a discussion item?
Well, my strategy on here is to reject all bids. However, again, this is, if we do that, then it'll be my third time out on this.
Right.
So, I wanted to give you an option that would fall within what we could do. And if council chooses, we're ready to move forward and rebid this project. And that was where I'm at. However, if the council felt they wanted to move this project down the road, they legally could by rejecting one, two, and three. And because number four bidder did follow all the rules and when he put his bid in here. So, I gave you the option, should you have asked me tonight, well, what if we wanted to award number four, what could we have done? Then you would have had to do that, and then we would have had to do a resolution anyway to appropriate additional funding. So, that's kinda where I left you with that option. Whether it should've been a discussion, you've pulled it, so now we're discussing.
Okay. So, after the first round, that, where you weren't here, Todd took the beating, I'm gonna make the assumption this time that this is, that your specifications were much clearer and your job walk was much clearer, and this is the, just the failure of the first three bidders to properly fill out the format.
My job walk was crystal clear, to the point that I spent time on the past errors for those who decided to return to bid on this. And I don't know how I could've made it clearer. However, KMI, who was the first one, didn't, they weren't at our first bid, and I know where their errors are, and I actually talked to the owner and talked to their estimator, and the problem is they were unresponsive. So, making me promises now I'll do it for that same price doesn't work. So, anyway, but it was very clear to them on the process. We've kinda banged our heads against the walls on how could I make it a little clearer? We have an idea on that, but, you know, a lot of these guys are just making changes in the parking lot, and they're not being thorough. And I spent some time in that bid walk explaining to them how thorough they need to be.
Good.
It was very clear.
I know Councilman Hoffman's got some comments to make, but I just wanted to get away from having to make a choice on a consent calendar, so...
Ted?
Well, it kinda hit my points, Greg, is that, I'm looking at here, and you have five out of seven, is that, that couldn't follow directions? So, either, and when I look at one or two, maybe they didn't, and if, and you're saying you're crystal clear, and Brian, I believe you. But somehow or another, when you get that many inconsistencies, or these guys are putting the bids on the wrong sheet or the wrong paperwork, or did not use this, and what kind of people are bidding, or are they, are our directions crystal clear?
That's a great question, and we really looked at that this second time around and said, okay, how could we, what could we do differently? Bid number four was very clear. He had one, he had called in on one question, which we satisfied with in RFI, and nobody else seemed to figure it. The only thing I can think of is that what some of them are doing is putting a lump sum in and then including these other areas, but the bid document clearly identifies those five areas in which they were to fill in. And I don't know how you miss the fact that you have to detail air balancing on 21 units, you have to provide thermostats for 21 units. It's spelled out, and you need to have a price in there for each of those, and I don't know how, I don't know how you miss it. I do know, after talking to the lowest bid, how they missed it, and it was totally their error, and obviously, her, she wouldn't miss it again, and, but again, she missed it, so...
Well, it just, it gets frustrating, because this is her second round with this.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot of staff time to just spend...
It is, and that's what I'm getting at, is...
And that's why I left you an option, should you choose to do that. Just in comparison from the last bid, our low bid in the last time we went was $297,000. So, that would be really the difference between the, our first time around in that bid, and if you recall, in the first two bidders in the last bid had, did everything right. The other ones were all over the place, so we said, let's throw it out and be clearer. And we did, but yet, some still missed it. By the way, the two guys that bid on, that were one and two on the last one, didn't bid on this one, so...
I guess they don't, they don't need to feed their families, okay, so, that's all I have. I just wanted clarification of why we have this way, thanks.
I was thinking about putting arrows and stars and see if I could point right where they needed to fill in a line, but maybe, I don't know. We do have an idea that we can maybe make it a little bit clearer, but...
So, I guess just my question for you, Brian, the staff recommendation was to reject the bids, is that still your recommendation?
Yeah.
Thank you.
But I put that in there in case the council did not want to go through a whole nother process, because another process costs additional funding from advertisement to staff time from our engineer and everyone. So, the question would be is, where we are right now, we're prepared to move forward and reject all bids if that's council's direction and rebid it.
My question coming from, the recommendation is to reject all bids, but we could, does it make more sense to not do that, then? Because we've gone through this process twice, these numbers are around what they should be anyways, so we should...
I think the number four bidder is, has a good bid. I think it's a fair bid based on my evaluation. However, you know, I might be able to bring it in... However, you know, I might be able to bring it in a little bit less the next time around, but then I'm starting to also weigh the time and energy involved with that, and does it really pan out if you're going to save $3,000 or $4,000? But most certainly, one, two, and three, we're unresponsive in this. And so we can't take their bids at all.
Greg?
Two points on that. But first, Brian, I don't think this is a matter of just a couple of thousand dollars in where we were the first time, what our budget is, and where the apparent, where the fourth bidder is. Because I think we, because we're still, what, $126,000 unfunded on this? So I think it's, it's a little more than just a couple of thousand dollars. I'll make a motion, but just, I guess Ted, you brought it up, and like I said, I'm not going to pound on this this time, and Chad knows this just as well. The nature of the beast in bidding public works projects like this is the contractors are sitting in the parking lot, filling out their bid sheets, because their suppliers don't release their material numbers until, until the very last minute.
Right.
And that is to prevent bid shopping.
Right.
So then you're, you're pressed for time, and that's where the errors are made. And it's just, it's the way it is. So I'll make a motion to reject all bids, period.
I'll second that. And to your, to your point, Greg, I can remember my dad is a heating and air conditioning contractor, literally sitting in his, at a payphone, and having to get the final bid for the air conditioners before he could actually present the bid. So there was no cell phones in. I second the motion. Any other comments?
Councilmember Alamon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Ted? Aye.
I guess this is more of a, somehow or another, this should be an easy thing. And Andy, I know this is you on this one, or Lisette, it's just, this seems like an overreach to me, us taking business things, and that's what I'm looking at. I know we were providing information between the feds and the state and business. To me, is this, is this normal practice for cities to do this? This type of a transfer of information?
Yesterday.
I'm being, I'm being the very conservative libertarian kind of guy, I am.
Thank you.
Okay?
But in any case, this is a mutual sharing of information between the city and the franchise tax board. This is something we've been doing for many, many years now. And many cities do this. It is entirely for the sole purpose of fair and equitable administration of tax collection, revenue collection, on the asset and as well as on our side. You know, it's just a matching of information, so that we look at the information we get from the franchise tax board, and we compare that to our information we have on our business license tax database. And if there are businesses here in Norco that are not licensed, or don't have not taken out business license, that's one way of reaching out to them and make sure that they come into compliance. And similarly, the state, I'm sure, does the same on the other side. If there are businesses in here that don't actually file their taxes, that the state contacts them and try to bring them into compliance. To me, it's part of equitable and effective administration of revenue collection by the state and the city government.
Yes, we do have our business license account clerk that will get this file and review the, you know, the discrepancies that are noted between our, our business license, and sends them a letter, contacts them to say, hey, you know, we have information that you have a business here in the city, sends the application, and sometimes they call back. There might be exceptions that they have a home address here, but they're actually not in the city doing the services, they're in a different. So each cities, you know, each business is analyzed and reviewed, and then if they do apply, you know, it goes through the whole process where other departments, depending on the type of business, have to get involved to do compliance of, you know, whether it's planning, building, or with fire.
So it is reciprocal?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. If no one else, I'll move to approve.
Second?
Second.
Yes.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
And finally, Jay, I only pulled this because I just wanted to ask the question, is there any other comments regarding this issue on the ethics and the changes that we made? Anybody have any final words they want to say on it? Then motion to approve.
Yes.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman? Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Moving on to item four, public comments. Dana, do you have any phone calls, emails?
Let me go ahead and start with that. Now is the time to dial in for public comment. For general comment item number four, you will place in a queue, and your call will be answered in the order received. You will have three minutes to speak. The call will disconnect promptly at the end of three minutes. You will need to call during each item you wish to speak upon. Callers are asked to abide by public decorum and use language that is appropriate to a public environment. Please dial 951-582-5557 now. And we have no written public comment for this evening.
Have any in the queue?
We have no calls in the queue, mayor.
Closing public comments. Moving on to item five, city council discussion and action items. Order of presentation for discussion items. One, staff report presentation. Two, council questions of staff. Three, public speakers in favor, against, neutral. Four, council discussion and action. First item is 5A, report on fiscal year 2020 audited financial reports, finance director. Hi, Lisette, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Hello, everyone. We are finally presenting the financial audited statements of the city for June 30, 6/30. We do have our auditors that will be doing a presentation virtually, so we'll go ahead and set that up.
Good evening, honorable mayor, and members of the city council. Everybody can hear me okay?
No.
I couldn't, I couldn't hear the response, but I will proceed. So the city of Norco.
Hang on, we, we're having trouble hearing you.
...financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30 of 2020. In advance to the next slide, please.
Lisette?
Do you want me to call in?
Can't, will we be able to hear it? Here's our tech, tech fellow coming.
Have him do a call in at this time? Can you open up the queue to have him call in?
I can do that, yeah.
Make it easier?
Yeah, and then he can still.
Control the.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll give you a minute to open it.
Okay.
Okay, we're going to open up the queue for you to call in, and you'll call in to the number 951-582-5557. That's correct. Okay.
Okay, here now, slide.
Okay. Is that better, everybody? Honorable mayor, members of city council, is everything fine?
I think we, it's better than what we had, so we're good.
Okay, I apologize for not being there in person under the circumstances, but let me, I'm here to present the results of our audit of the city's financial statements for the year ended June 30 of 2020. And in advance to the next slide, please. Wanted to briefly touch base with you on the scope of our services for the year, June 30, 2020. We were to audit the financial statements that are contained in the city's comprehensive annual financial report. We also were to audit a separate measure R, financial statements. We were engaged, if necessary, to do a single audit of the city's federal grant programs. However, the expenditures for the fiscal year ended June 30, 20 did not exceed $760,000, which is the threshold for that, so no single audit was performed for this year. We did an agreed-upon procedures review of the city's appropriations limit, and had no findings related to that. We also compiled the city's annual financial transaction report and filed it with the state comptroller's office. And then finally, we assisted in the preparation of the city's comprehensive annual financial report. Next slide, please. Objectives of the audit is, your management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the city's financial statements and the controls related to the financial reporting. We as auditors are responsible for expressing our opinions on the city's financial statements. And the good news is, is that my firm, CLA, expressed an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements. That's the highest form of opinion that can be provided under the auditing standards, i.e., it's also called a clean opinion. Next slide. I'm required to go over a few things, required communications, and the fact that you see none on all these line items is a good thing. We had no difficulties performing the audit. We had no disagreements with management. We did not come across any material misstatements. We did have a few journal entry, audit entries, but they were not material. There were no uncorrected misstatements. We did not come across any material we missed in internal control, and we did not come across any material not compliant items during the course of our audit. Next slide, please. There was no new accounting policies adopted for the year, and part of that was, had to do with the pandemic situation. The governmental accounting standards board issued a GASB statement number 95, which essentially postponed any of the standards that were supposed to be implemented for June 30, 2020, and those have been extended for one year. So the statements there under future significant standards, the fiduciary activities and the leases, fiduciary activities will be required to be implemented for fiscal year ended June 30, 2021, and then leases in June 30, 2022. And finally there, we did not note any transactions that lacked authoritative guidance. There was no unusual quirky accounting transactions. Next slide, please. Wanted to remind you that your financial statements do contain significant estimates, and those significant estimates have to do with the city's defined benefit pension plan, the city's other post-employment benefit plan, and then the estimates related to coming up with a liability for general liability, workers' comp liabilities. Next slide. And more information and the detail behind what makes up those estimates can be found in your financial statements, and note five, 11, and 12 is indicated on the slide. And wanted to point out to you on the other matters, that your comprehensive annual financial statement contains several sections. The required supplementary information section, which includes the management's discussion and analysis, we only perform limited procedures on those sections, mainly making sure that the information contained therein is consistent with what we audited in the financial statements and the notes to the financial statements. The supplementary information, we compared and reconciled the underlying accounting records to the financial statements themselves, and those have an unmodified opinion in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. And then there's that introductory section, and then a statistical section in the back. And we, again, that is not audited information, but we do look for consistency with what we did audit. Next slide. So with that, I wanted to point out that as of June 30, 2020, your general fund had total assets of $29 million. If you take out the liabilities and unavailable revenues of 4.3 million, the ending fund balance for June 30 of 2020 was $24.7 million, and that's an increase of $4.5 million over the prior year. Likewise, on the water and sewer fund, the enterprise fund, you had a net position of $64.2 million. That's a $2.6 million increase over the prior year. $1 million of that related to the water enterprise fund, and $1.6 million related to the sewer enterprise fund. And with that, I will open it up to any questions you had related to the audit, but as you can see, it was a clean opinion and, and a lot of nuns on there, which is a good thing to have. Any questions?
Counsel? Ted? Robyn? Catherine? Greg?
Yeah, I got to find it, now that you gave me two books. Go ahead, Kevin, and just come back to me.
I don't have a whole lot. First off, of course, this really isn't direct to the gentleman that we're talking to, but once again, I want to point out the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, yet again. That's, I'm very proud of that. I also have to just mention, the general fund balance is amazing. I mean, Andy and Lisette and your team, please thank them. Thank you to the whole team, city of Norco. As you all know, 10 years ago, we dug ourselves out of a hole that we almost didn't dig ourselves out of, and many cities still have not dug themselves out. So thank you so much for being excellent bean counters. Really appreciate it. And then on page 10, I just got a question, because I'd like the public to know this. There's a revenues by source, and if you wouldn't mind, and I'm putting you on the spot, I should have called you, I apologize, Andy, between the two of you, I'm sure you can figure this out. So of this pie chart, so the sales tax, 40% revenues by source, so like for sales tax, for every dollar, how much are we getting in terms of, what does Norco ultimately receive from that 40%? So per dollar, however you want to break it down?
First, let me go here.
Well, how many pennies per dollar? I'm sorry, I should have called you. I apologize. I know you.
If I could help out with that. So this pie chart, so you know, the sales tax numbers reported on this pie chart is for all governmental activities.
Yeah.
Which means it also includes sales tax derived from the measure R funds.
Right.
Okay? So under the Bradley Barnes, which is the regular 1%, we get about 12 cents, I believe, on each dollar.
Right.
And under measure R, because those sales tax are collected differently, we'll probably get less than 12 cents, maybe it's 10. Actually, we get all of that. That's a separate item. We get 100% of what is collected for measure R.
Right.
Goes to the city of Norco, so.
So my point on that is, just so people know, that we go out, we find the businesses, we beat the bushes, we cater to them, we work very hard to get them, get them to stay here, help them be successful, and for those efforts. stay here, help them be successful, and for those efforts, we get 12 cents per dollar, correct? Roughly.
That's about right.
And then, uh, property taxes. Again, to put you on the spot, either Andy or Lisette, what do we get from the property taxes? What's the percentage of that?
Yeah, so our percentage has been increasing.
Right.
But, uh, it's still less than 10 cents on a dollar. I think we're like 8 cents, 7 cents, some, somewhere along that line, uh, for property tax.
So, so my point is, is again, that we get roughly 20 cents on all of our property tax dollars and on our sales tax dollars, and the rest of it goes elsewhere. And once again, we, you know, it's in our town, property tax, I'm a little bit easier with, sales tax, a lot of, a lot of work. And then just the other things on the pie chart, the operation grants, that, I forget that one. Just roughly, if you can, the other revenues, other taxes, what's, what's our percentage on that kind of stuff? And charges for services, I know we basically pretty much all of that, but the rest of it, is there a way you can quantify that, or is that impossible?
Uh, it's, it's a mixed bag.
Okay.
It's impossible.
That's what I thought.
Some of it, we get entire amount, but there are some that are revenues that are shared with other governmental entities.
Right. So anyway, my point is, is that, is that we, for every dollar from property and sales tax, we're getting roughly, let's say 20 cents, maybe 21, 22 cents. No?
Getting 8% of one and 12% of the other.
Well, I was trying to, I was trying to.
And add it together.
I was trying to figure out by, per dollar. So 12% of one is.
They're different dollars.
No, no, I get that. I get that. I understand that. I understand. I'm just trying to say that, that we get such a small percentage.
That's right.
It ain't much to run the entire city, so, um, again, I have to applaud staff, because you guys have done an excellent job. You've brought in a lot of very diverse businesses in the last five to 10 years, and I really appreciate it. And that's all I have. Anybody else?
There is one thing I do want to point out.
Yep.
Between, so if you're reading this audited financial reports, the general fund, as identified in this audited financial report, includes measure R fund.
Right.
It also includes the special asset revenue fund. So if, if you're trying to look at the numbers in there and you're wondering how that, uh, is different from the numbers we showed to you as part of our, uh, budget to actual report for the year end, uh, so those numbers may look different, that's the reason for that. Under generally accepted accounting principles, the auditors are required to consolidate these measure R, special asset revenue fund, and the general fund into one fund for purposes of this report. But when we bring the budget to actual report, we do break that out for you, so you see where each of those funds stand. I think it's.
No, I, I do understand that.
Something to highlight.
Yeah, I just, um, so, so take the compliment. It's, it's, uh, pretty impressive. Either way, if you want to break it into pots, however, it's, uh, and it's very appreciated. And then, and what I'm trying to do is let residents know that their money, money is being handled well. Greg.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisette?
Yes.
Good, good job, you and your staff. Appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you.
That you do.
All that.
Always. My first question, this may bleed over to Chad, so you can give him the look. This is on page 78, and, um, this has to do with the Chino Basin Water Master. And.
We don't have the full report.
Okay. I guess I'll start with Lis, I'll ask the question of Lisette, then. So on, it says, "In June 30th, 2020, we have an entitlement in Water Master of 2,300 acre feet." And we are showing that this has a value of approximately $1,200,000. I am trying to recall that, and I guess I'm questioning the value of, of million two, that maybe it was like three, four years ago, we sold acre feet out of Water Master to the City of Fontana, and we rejected their first offer, and we got another, I don't know, 100 and some thousand dollars. Do you recall the acre feet that we sold and the, the value of that? I remember that was well over a million dollars.
Yeah.
And, and I don't think it was anywhere near 2,300 acre feet. Is, is that what we sold them? And it was like a million, 1 million 2?
Yeah, 1.15.
Okay.
So we roughly sold for a little about 550 dollars.
Okay, so do you feel this million 2 is still a consistent number?
I could, I could forward you, um, after the, you know, tomorrow, the reports that are used for this.
Okay.
The Water Master does issue, uh, um, I guess a fiscal year report regarding all their water and consumption and storage, and it, and it's very detailed, it's a big report, so that has where this, this number came from.
All right.
The value of water has, of purchasing this type of water for replacement purpose has gone up.
Mm-hmm.
Always can be just below the replenishment cost that.
Right.
Empire offers will be always under that, so if their price is about 700, we'll probably be about 6. They're definitely more than what it was we paid.
Right, right.
It's gonna be around that 600 range at least.
Because I see the desalter rate going up, and Western's going up, and, and so I was just, this is a, a conservative value with that.
I would say it is.
Okay.
But you mind the desalter rate is the, the oxygen treated.
Right, exactly.
This is untreated, what they are purchasing from us is.
Untreated.
Purchasing replacement water from, from inland empire utilities, which is reclaimed water.
Right.
Or even water from MWD, which is untreated water, which has a cheaper cost, so it's just the difference, yeah, value of, uh, utterly certainly higher than this replacement.
Okay. Still money in the bank, though.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It has a depth of value.
Yes. Okay, so then, just one last question, this is on pages seven, turn to page 76 and 77, Lisette, and this is on Silver Lake's ground lease. Let's say on page 77, note, uh, 15. For a year 2021, our revenue is 342,000. Uh, for 2022, it goes up to 456, then 551, in 2024, it goes to 570, and in 2025, it drops almost $100,000 to 475,000. And, and we do have increases, uh, I think first year, or six-year lease, and then the 16th year, uh, increases of 8%. So my question is, why in 2025 will our revenue be projected to be on the downslope?
We have the deferment that's going on with Silver Lake, that they will start paying and to catch up with the.
So this is on the forbearance?
Yes. So those are included in the, why the next two years are higher.
Okay. So then, I should really take it back from, what?
Cause their payment.
2021, the 342 then goes to skip these three years, in a way? Because that's the pickup on the forbearance?
Yeah, it will start, um, I believe, let's see, will be paid in 24 monthly installments commencing September 1st, 2022.
Okay. So in 2025, we kind of go back to normal, but it still has the 8% increase and all of that.
Yes.
Okay, I knew you'd have the answer. Thank you, that's all I have. Appreciate it.
Catherine? Robin? Ted? All right, this is receive and file.
We'll need to ask for public comment.
Yep.
And we're done with the auditor, correct? You have no questions?
Yes.
Okay, I'll be disconnecting the auditor, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you, Ma, Mayor and Honorable Counsel, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any public comments?
Now is the time for you to dial in for item 5A regarding the audit reports, and the, please dial 951-582-5557. Do we have any in the queue? We have no calls in the queue, Mayor?
Closing public comments. Uh, any other discussion? Receive and file. Go here a second.
Councilmember Alamon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion, passage unanimous, thank you.
Moving on to 5B, approval of memorandum of understanding between the City of Norco and City of Corona for collaborative homeless programs and services. Andy Accorall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, City Council is being requested to take two actions. Their first action is approve a memorandum, memorandum of understanding between the City of Norco and City of Corona for collaborative homeless programs and services. Their second action, City Council is requested to take is to approve resolution number 2021-13, appropriating $100,000 from the housing asset fund, uh, for homeless programs and services. And I will, uh, go into detail a little bit more on these two items. Uh, this is really a continuation of the, the discussion we started here on January 2020, 21. Um, at that City Council meeting, uh, the City Council designated, uh, Councilmember Robin Grumeyer to work with city staff to explore potential collaboration with the City of Corona to provide homeless services and programs in the City of Norco. Uh, since that meeting, uh, in January of this year, uh, we have had several other meetings, uh, between staff, uh, City Councilmember Grumeyer, City Councilmember from the City of Corona, and their staff, uh, including public safety folks, uh, to explore how, uh, we can provide these services, uh, uh, to, to homeless people in the, in the City of, of, of Norco. As you know, City of Corona has a robust homeless program that includes a very strategic plan. Uh, what we are proposing to do here is to sort of piggyback on that, uh, uh, plan that is currently working, uh, in the City of Norco, uh, in the City of Corona, I'm sorry. Uh, specifically, there are two specific programs we want to attach, uh, to the City of Corona's, uh, program. Number one is the motel voucher emergency shelter program. Uh, the other one is the, uh, the outreach engagement and case management program. Under the motel voucher shelter program, CityNet will provide temporary shelter and motels, uh, in the city to homeless individuals approved by the City of, of Norco. City of Corona and City of Norco will work with the, with CityNet to establish, uh, client referral protocols and priorities. Uh, generally, uh, potential eligible, uh, homeless individuals are identified by CityNet through this outreach program. And, uh, once those individuals are identified and they're placed into the program, uh, they would then be entitled to receive, uh, ma, accommodation at a local hotel here in the City of, uh, of Norco. An individual who qualifies, you know, meets the eligibility criteria can spend up to 90 days, uh, in the motel or hotel, uh, depending on the ability to, uh, transition out of that. Uh, but they have to meet their program guidelines, continue to meet program guidelines, and follow the rules, uh, for that program. Ultimately, uh, the, the goal is to, uh, have these people, uh, transition into some sort of a permanent housing. The outreach program, uh, is designed, again, to continue to work with these people, uh, to outreach to them and to provide, uh, services to them so that, again, ultimately, uh, the transition to, uh, a permanent housing, uh, program. The outreach program also, uh, includes a situation where they actually go out, uh, on, on the streets, uh, to identify those that are experiencing homelessness, uh, here in the City of, of, of Norco, and, uh, find ways to provide, uh, services to them. Again, this just does not just involve a CityNet employees, uh, that will be working in consultation with city staff, uh, to, uh, screen these people that are potentially eligible, uh, to participate, uh, in this program. Um, the, uh, for the outreach program, uh, the estimated cost for that is $48,552 for a pilot program we anticipate into a last anywhere between three and a half, uh, three months to maybe three and a half months at the maximum. Uh, this program is not yet in place, this is only for the, uh, for the remainder of the fiscal year, and, uh, in order for us to commence this program, the City of Corona also has, uh, has to approve the program. And once that is approved, then, uh, the program will, will kick into, into gear here in the City of, of Norco. Uh, with respect to the, uh, again, the hotel voucher program, uh, total estimated cost actually is, that is the one that is $48,552. The outreach program, which involves about eight hours a week here in the City of, of Norco, and that eight hours a week will be staffed by two case managers. And the reason they do that is for safety purposes. Uh, they don't want to have a situation where this only one case manager is, uh, is doing this work, uh, of interacting with, uh, people that are, are homeless here in the City of Norco. The charges for the outreach program, uh, again, assuming that we do it for about eight hours, eight hours a week, uh, for a period of maybe three and a half months, um, the costs, uh, for that, direct cost and indirect cost is about $11,039, uh, for the remainder of the fiscal year. The cost that is included in this program includes a 10% administrative fee, uh, to be charged, uh, by the City of Corona. And that is, of course, for, uh, reviewing the contracts, administering the contracts, and, and paying the bills associated, uh, with this program. Um, the, they are, City of Corona is responsible for paying all the bills. Once the bills are paid, reviewed and paid, uh, then they will send us, uh, the portion of the bill, uh, that belongs to us and will pay directly to the City of Corona. Uh, and again, uh, that includes a 10% administrative fee that is charged, uh, by the City of Corona. A 10% administrative fee is perceived to be very reasonable, uh, for administrative purposes. Typically, this, uh, this, this charge is, is about 15%. Uh, but again, most important of this is, we want to see how this program works, uh, in here in the City of Norco, and how this collaboration between the City of Corona and the City of Norco works. Uh, if it works well, it could serve as a model by which this program can actually be expanded, uh, to include other cities in the, in the area. City of, uh, Isver may come into, into collaboration here, City of Rupa Valley may come into collaboration here. Uh, this is, uh, the approach that is being recommended, uh, by the state, by the county board of supervisors, um, that is a way to provide a more effective program, uh, to folks that are experiencing, experiencing homelessness. Um, I will, you have a, a public comment, uh, from a resident, uh, about, uh, this program. I will address some of the questions that have been raised in that. One of it deals with this 10% surcharge. As I have stated, uh, this 10% surcharge by the City of Corona, uh, is, uh, is reasonable, and, uh, again, is for, uh, their role in, in administering this, this contract with CityNet, uh, as well as, uh, paying the bills and, and, uh, doing the other review and follow-ups that is required as, as part of this program. Again, city staff will be involved to a limited extent, but, uh, the, the bulk of the work in terms of administering this is, is clearly, uh, false on the, is the responsibility of the City of Corona. Uh, a question is asked is that whether CityNet is a nonprofit or for product, for-profit organization, and why the 10% surcharge? They are in fact a nonprofit organization, and, uh, they don't, they don't. They are, in fact, a nonprofit organization, and they don't actually return any profit made. With respect to the Outreach Engagement Manager, actual city staff, are those actual city staff? No, those are not city staff. Those are staff that work for CityNet. And as I stated, those will include two case managers. However, again, our Sherr's Department, our staff, may from time to time get involved with this outreach process, as well as screening those who may qualify to participate under this program. The rate that was, the question that was posed here regarding the rate, I think that is precisely because one of the schedules that was supposed to be included with the staff report somehow did not get attached. There is a budget schedule here. You have that on your diars that details how the amounts are calculated. They are certainly not $689 per hour. They are more like $33 per hour for each of the hours that are walked by these case managers. Unfortunately, these hours are based on overtime because the way CityNet staffs is that the staff based on the contract that they have. This is an amendment to their contract, and they can't just go out and hire two case managers to do eight hours a week. Therefore, the only way to staff this program in the City of Norco is to pay existing case managers overtime rate. As far as why staff is recommending an appropriation of $100,000 instead of the $72,000, $72,104 that is included in the budget schedule, again, this is simply a pilot program. And all these estimates here are simply based on some expectations of what might happen. This may or may not happen. This is just starting off. There is a likelihood that the cost may significantly come in below $72,000. But on the other hand, if it becomes successful and we end up taking more people in than what we anticipate under this budget schedule, this provides funding to do that without having to come back to the City Council to do a budget amendment. But it is important to note that all the payments that will be made under this contract are going to be based on actual expenditures made and not based on a budget schedule. With that, I want to turn it over, first of all, to Councilmember Grumeyer to see if she has additional comments to make because she's participated in some of those meetings we have had with the City of Corona.
Thank you. I'm very excited to see this finally move forward. And a couple of comments to kind of go off of what Andy said. The City of Norco and those of us in the meeting, or the City of Corona and those of us in the meeting with the City of Norco really do believe in this pilot program and showing a collaboration between the two cities. When you look at an issue such as homelessness, it does overlap. It doesn't have boundaries. And there were stories shared even in one of our meetings how our homeless neighbors know that there's different jurisdictions in the areas where they're at. And so if one jurisdiction moves them, they simply know where those boundaries are at and can move over and get an extension of 30 days or 60 days or whatever the case may be. So the more overlap that our jurisdictions can provide, the better it is to service that homeless community. And I think the only other thing that I want to bring to the attention of not only my colleagues but the residents is it's taken us years to have the number of homeless neighbors that we do. So by potentially instituting this program and having this pilot program, it's not something that's going to be solved overnight. It's something that's going to take time to be resolved. In our meetings, it was discussed that it will potentially take more than 70 points of contact with some of our homeless neighbors before that trust and that relationship is built for them to take services that would potentially be provided. And so I think that needs to be taken into consideration as we're working through some of the obstacles and challenges that we'll face. And the other thing that I would like to just bring to everyone's attention is we have a lot of homeless neighbors that you probably don't see. All of us are familiar with some of our neighbors that sleep in front of Stater Brothers or those types of things when you're out and about. But we have a lot of our homeless neighbors that are living in cars, in parking lots, that you would never know if you're not looking and paying attention to see what is going on there. We have a lot of homeless neighbors that, you know, in my profession, we call couch surfing, where they're moving from one couch to another couch and they really don't have a home. And so I feel like some of our opportunities will probably, in the beginning, be more towards our homeless neighbors that we don't see. And there would be a likelihood for our residents and our community to say, well, that's great, we've spent $100,000 and, you know, so-and-so's still sleeping in front of Stater Brothers. That's very real and highly likely. And so I want you to give city staff and CityNet the time and the opportunity to help our neighbors and make those points of contact and build those relationships and build that trust to allow the program to work because we didn't get here overnight and it's certainly not going to be solved overnight. And so I think those were my biggest takeaways. And I'm certainly very pleased with the fact that there's the contract with CityNet where it's professionals, that this is their job, this is what they do. They've been trained to help some of our folks that don't want help, to be quite honest with you. So I think we're taking a step in the right direction, and I hope that this program is incredibly successful and that it goes just like Andy said, that Isvell and Harupa Valley and all of us have this big collaborative that really does turn into a model for other places to follow. So, thank you.
Great, thank you, Robin. Catherine, anything?
Sure, I would just add, I'm so pleased to see this program come, to come as well. I want to thank Councilmember Grumeyer and all the city staff who have worked on this. The City of Corona has a very robust homeless strategic plan. So if any residents are interested to see what that program is, you can just Google it. And it breaks through why the strategy of homes, you know, providing homes and providing shelter to our homeless residents is really what will help them the most and also is really makes the most financial sense. So it costs less to be proactive and to have a program in place than it does to just send out people when, you know, there are phone calls that are made about, you know, our neighbor in front of Stater Brothers or what have you, and when people need, you know, medical care or what have you. So I think that this program, as a pilot program, is very good for steps, recognizing that it takes time. This isn't a problem that can be solved like this, or communities would have done it already, and that it's definitely a community need, that we need this here. I'm happy to support this. I'm happy to see this coming through, and I'm happy. Thank you, Andy, for answering the questions that came in for us.
Greg?
Well, I certainly support this pilot program also, but Robin, I have a couple of questions for you. And since we just got this attachment, one of my notes before this was, will we have the ability to audit these costs? And...
Absolutely. I suspect when the City of Corona sends us a bill, the attachment to it would be the bill from CityNet that itemizes the costs that are potential to Norco.
Okay, and then, like I said, before we got this exhibit, I had, you know, what was actual, you know, dollars that would be to outreach? So, Robin, in your discussions, like the motel rooms, are those Norco motels or are they Corona facilities?
It's Norco motels.
Okay. And because just, you know, doing a quick ad of, out of this 70-some thousand, it seems like $42,000 is actually going to, you know, the support, the housing, the food, you know, for the homeless, everything else is just administration costs.
Yeah, that is correct. So like on the exhibit that we did get here a little bit ago, the actual labor, like the case managers going out, and then in addition, the paperwork supporting that's the $11,000. And then the $48,000 and change is for operations and program expenses, like you've mentioned. So the hotel rooms, the food vouchers, moving our homeless neighbors, any transportation they might need to support services, medical services are there as well listed. Equipment that's needed. There is the expense for PPE at this time as well that's itemized out. And so, yeah, the operating expenses are the most. And the hotel, the hotel's a big chunk of it.
Yeah.
The number of room nights. So, but something that Catherine said, and I know Karen Roper would have the figures, in the City of Corona, they tracked calls for service regarding homelessness, and it is actually more cost-effective for them to be proactive and do this program than what they were paying for calls for service. And there was some discussion in our meetings, you know, at some point, can Cal Fire and Norco Sheriff look at what their calls for service and what the expenses are related to what we're spending here? We're just not at that point with the pilot program. But Corona does have those numbers to show that what they're doing is much more cost-effective.
On this, under operations, the second, where it says motel six, or motel, I'm sorry, motel tax. Yeah. No surprises. Motel tax at $9 a night. Is that TOT or is that sales tax? Okay, so the TOT comes back to the city, but we're going to end up paying a $20 or 20% administration fee, 10% by CityNet and 10% by the City of Corona, for us to collect a 10% TOT tax. Would it not be a benefit to waive the TOT tax in these incidences?
The TOT tax is a tax that is paid on the room. What I... But I guess I'm not clear that...
And one is general fund, and the source of the payment going the other way is from our low and mod fund, housing funds.
Yeah, that part I know. It just doesn't seem to make sense to me that we should charge a tax and then pay a 20% markup to, you know, have to do that. Yeah, it's a 10% on the daily, the daily rate. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, is that possible? Yeah, in this case. Right. And I'm just throwing that out there. It says here, you know, in this budget, $3,200 for the TOT tax, but we're going to pay a 20% markup, 10% and 10%.
And waiving it causes the general fund to subsidize it.
Okay, and not the housing fund?
Correct.
All right. Okay. I mean, I support it. I think this is a good idea. It's a pilot program, and the need is there. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, prudent and doing our due diligence with it, so.
Ted?
Robin, I appreciate all of your work and time that you've put into this, along with staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Ted?
Well, as someone that's dealt with the homeless while I was in the Sheriff's Department, this is a good program. Wish we had had it out there in Paris and Elson or we were out there, Justin. But I have to ask a few things. Andy, you said 90 days, and that's what this paperwork says? One person staying in there 90 days in a room? Don't we have to change our ordinance because we're only at 30 days max on some of these? Well, no, we, and when, for example, we had extended stay come in, maximum was 30 days. So we wouldn't have those long stays. And in most of our hotels, we've written that up, and John's getting ready to tell me that...
No, I was just, I was just going to agree with what you're saying, yeah.
There is no limit to generally how long the stay as a transient coming to rent a motel. What happens is TOT is collected for the first 30 days. With discouragement of your sleep.
Okay.
First 30 days, they pay the TOT tax. After that, they basically are no longer considered transient, and the TOT tax would not apply.
Okay, no, we're talking two different things.
I think...
I'm talking about the extent, the length of stay when that was the big, one of the big things we've talked about when we've had our, the hotel that came in, the extended stay, was how long they could stay in. And that was one of the things in the, in our agreement, that they could only have a 30-day stay, and they would have to move out and then come back in. That was under our conditions of approval on those hotels. And now we're doing, I'm just saying, we have to change because that was the one thing that we didn't want, was to become these long periods. So, I mean, you got them for 90 days. So this is something that we will have to look into to see if that's, or make a special consideration on that, on it. Because that was part of our conditions, and especially on these other hotels, is that's what they were going to do.
We probably need to take a look, because my recollection is the same as yours, but that I think that it's conditions of approval which we enforce, under the assumption we're the ones who are doing the assigning. We're not going to be able to, we clearly couldn't go after the hotel for violating their conditions of approval. But it might be something that we want to address with them or amend the conditions to exempt this type of homeless program.
Well, as long as we get a clarification, because I remember that when we first came in here, that was the one thing we were worried about with the extended stay, was that situation.
Yes.
Because...
We, if you recall, we had a relatively recent situation involving that, that...
Correct, and that's, I'm very familiar with what happened. When I was working in the southwest area in the City of Temecula, we had one hotel that didn't care. And those, for lack of a better term, what Mr. Councilman Newton referenced was that certain motel chain that, yeah, and it was a mess, especially when the labs started appearing. So, but I don't want to see that happen. I don't think it's going to, but it's one thing we have to be concerned about. So, that...
In addition, I mean, it's actually an interesting question, but it's also, I'm not sure, meets the definition in their conditions, which we really need to look at because it's not the tenant that's paying. I mean, it's the, it's the public agency so that, I mean, literally, the hotel isn't renting to the homeless individual. Rather, the city is paying the hotel X amount of dollars for the use of their room.
We need to look at that, that's all.
Just to add to that, CityNet in their contract will, if that is an issue, will move them to another hotel.
Okay, that's fine. Just move, that was the one thing that we discussed. So we, and Lieutenant and, or, I know, Robin, we So we, and Lieutenant and, or, I know, Rob, we didn't have a live count this year, did we? You guys don't have any idea how, I mean, we're under, we're under 10 on our homeless, It's, the ones that we know about, we're about 10, right?
The last count, it was 12.
12, okay.
Yeah. Our point in time is at that number, however, as Robin indicated, you have those that are not accounted for.
Yeah, and those are the ones, but under the, okay. I'm just, and by the way, this came up, the regional thing, and we wonder why Corona got those out of the riverbed so fast. It had nothing to do with anything they were doing, because the Army Corps of Engineers said, "Our bulldozers are coming, you better move." And they weren't stopping. And so that's why they moved them out of that camp, because they were looking at a D9 in front of them. So, they moved. And that was one of the things we talked about when I'm on, with the one water, one watershed. And this is the regional approach, and I'm glad we're doing it this way. Our homeless numbers in the riverbed, as soon as we get, you know, we're coming into spring, they will grow. Harupa Valley is already understanding, especially in Greg's favorite spot underneath the Van Buren Bridge, his, one water, one watershed along the sop is looking at that. So, as soon as we can get this thing off the ground, get it running, and bring in these other communities, we've gotta get those people out of the riverbed. The contamination factor is there. The fire danger is there. Chief knows that. We didn't have a wet year, we're gonna have a dry year. And most of us were here in the man fire, I don't want to go through that again. So, this is a good thing. One more thing. And Andy, I thought our TOT was 11%.
Yeah, our TOT is 11%.
Okay, so their, their numbers are wrong, right?
Probably based on the coronation.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm not, it's not that much, but it just, when they do their numbers, it is 11. So, okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
So I just have a couple of questions. So, the Corona administrative fee, we don't have a breakdown of what that's for? So we're actually losing 20% with the indirect cost to CityNet, utilities, taxes, insurance, and then another 10% to the city of Corona, so 20% gets taken off the top?
No, there is no breakdown for administrative fee, and there's a considered overhead rate, and typically, they don't, they don't provide you a breakdown of what that is.
So you have two overhead rates?
Yeah. The one, the overhead rate that is charged by CityNet, I did raise issue with this, with respect to the city of Corona. If you look at those numbers, 10%, 10%, they should all add up to be 59, 59, 59. But their amount is 65, 55. So, and the difference Karen explained to me is basically they are trying to, is a template, that the indirect fee for CityNet includes a charge on the charge that is administrative charge, charged by the city of Corona. But in practicality, that is not going to happen. That is, those two numbers should be the same.
They should be the same. How does, how does Karen get paid? Where does she get paid out of this? She works for the city of Corona?
She works for the city of Corona, yes.
Okay. And then so, and then below her, or who's ever in charge, you'd have your program supervisor, that kind of thing. Is she, is she the person in charge, or is it the city manager, or?
Well, I believe she reports to the city manager, but keep in mind, there's a whole lot of people that touch this then.
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah. Karen, there are the contracts folks, there are the accounting folks that pay the bills. For example, this, this agreement, MOU, was reviewed by the city attorney. That's how overhead rates are developed. Again, fortunately, it is part of, part of the own business. They could be nice and say, "We don't want to charge the city of Norco," but it doesn't work that way.
So basically, you have administrative fee from the city of Corona and indirect administrative fee from CityNet and that kind of thing. So we have 20% off the top, and then we've got the other stuff. I just wanted to be clear. So, for me, I think our homeless count's a lot higher. I think that you have a lot of women, and probably men too, who have lost a spouse, and they're living in their cars. It's awful. You also have a lot of kids that, even though they have the buffer now of a year out of the foster program, I've seen them. If they're fortunate to live in a car, that's one thing, but I know, well, I had somebody working for me last year that was couch surfing all through high school. It was unbelievable. So I'm 100% behind this program. In fact, I am so, so supportive of this program that I actually am bringing Karen and somebody from Northern California, and I want her to introduce this program at the Cal Cities Community Policy Committee for the entire state. She's gonna be my guest speaker. And I'm just totally impressed with her, and I'm impressed with what she's done. I mean, she's been doing this like 30 years, and it's just amazing, the program. And the reality is, the homeless situation, as Robin said, is gonna take years, but most places are failing. They're not able to figure it out. We haven't quite got that puzzle put together yet. And I'm hoping that maybe this is a step in finding ways to address the problem. Do we have anybody calling in on this, Dana?
Now is the time to dial in for item 5B. You'll be placed in a queue, and you'll have three minutes to speak. Please dial 951-582-5557 now. And I have no written comments that have been received after 5 o'clock. Do we have any callers in the queue? There's no callers in the queue, Mayor.
Closing public comments. I do have a, I just have a legal question. I've heard that if somebody lives in a, like a hotel, or they, after 90 days, they then can say they live there. Is that legally true, John? Do you know? Is that why they, like, when you have an extended stay hotel, they don't allow you to stay past X number of days? Do you have to, like, leave and then come back? Is that a myth?
I can't say that that's my area of expertise, but I have, I've never heard that there's any number anywhere like that. I mean, some of, and clearly, some of the, you know, the, like, where contractors send their folks to stay, the long-term hotels, they stay much longer than 90 days. So, I mean, I think that, well, I don't know what you, what you were told. I mean, for example, if you rent a room to somebody, then they stay longer than any period, they end up potentially, you have to go through an eviction process, and so, I mean, might have something to do with that, but I know no 90-day rule.
Well, I read it on the internet.
Oh.
So, any other comments on this?
John, on that, it used to be 30 days that you had the eviction, unless they've changed it. Lieutenant, it was, that's why the 30-day thing was there, was that hotels, and that's why they put a clause in there. The 30 days was there, because after that, you become a landlord-tenant situation. So you have to be careful on that. It's just not 90 days, and that's something that we'll have to, I said, research it, so we don't have to do a three-day notice to evict or quit. Just...
Thank you. Catherine?
Yeah, just two things. Will the draft budget be included in the minutes? Okay, perfect. So if anyone wants to see the breakdown that wasn't able to see it before, it will be in the minutes. And the second thing, just to point out for our residents, that this money for this program is not coming from the general fund, it's coming from our affordable housing fund. And there are strings attached, stipulations, rules and regulations on what we can actually use that money for. And we can use up to 200, anyone, correct me if I'm wrong, $250,000 per year towards homeless outreach, for which this program consists of. So we have this money in a fund, we can only use it for certain things, and one of those things is homeless outreach. So, that's just another reason that, again, I support the program, and I think it makes really good sense. We have those funds, it's a wonderful way to use them.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I move to approve a resolution, 2021-13.
Councilmember Alamon?
Yes.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous. Thank you.
We're gonna take a five-minute break right now.
We have to do the MOU approval.
Oh, that's right, it's two.
I move to approve the MOU between the city of Norco and city of Corona for the collaborative homeless services and programs.
Second. Yes.
Councilmember Grumeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
We'll now take a five-minute break, and then we will hear the next item. Request for approval of impact fee waiver for Mr. and Mrs. James and Althea Zimmer, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Staff has no recommendation on this item. We're just asking for city council direction. The Zimmers are in the process of processing application for construction of a 1,200 square feet ADU on their property. Their ADU application is being processed, pursuant to the provisions in the state's ADU laws and guidelines. The city's, does not currently have ADU ordinance that is compliant with state laws, and that's why we use the state guidelines to process ADUs. And the guidelines allow for impact fees to be assessed on ADUs that are greater than 750 square feet, based on the size of the proposed ADU relative to their primary residence. ADUs that are less than 750 square feet are not assessed any impact fees. The proposed 1,200 square feet ADU by the Zimmers is relative to their single-family primary residential dwelling of 2,546 square feet. for, for a long time. And not one person in the city has told us, "Here are your fees, 49% of your house, we're following state code, zero." They've told us, "We cannot get your fees figured out until the end." Now, we're at the end, and we get hit with these kind of fees.
We had no time, okay, so if we had known this upfront, we had other options, there are other options, right? You can, we could have put a smaller ADU. We could have done the temporary housing.
For the elderly.
We could have done other things, but we did not have this information upfront. And what's astounding to me is that if it was known upfront that it was based on state law, proportional to the size of our house, and the fees were there, literally, once we found out that information, which was, I don't know, several weeks ago now, a few weeks ago, for the first time, that it was 47.18%, I could go through and calculate that in five minutes, easily. But we were, it was not shown to us upfront. It's just, my main argument from the very beginning is it's not a transparent process. I heard you last session say, for the ethics thing, that you would go through the process, that the constituents would go through to see what that process would be, right? How easy would this process be? How transparent would it be? This is, I have been through so many different kinds of things like this, signing up for college, you know? I'm a teacher, I take kids through all kinds of different things, all the time, with checkoff lists, and you have to do this, and do this, and do this, and this is the fee, and this is the cost, and you make an informed decision as to whether or not this is something you can actually do. Can I afford the school, right? Can I afford, whatever it might be? But in this case, we did not have that opportunity. We took out a certain amount of home equity loan to cover costs based on our understanding, and we were never, that was taken away from us. The idea that we could, you know, even take out a loan that would have covered this cost, and that we would have been able to, you know, pay for it over time. Now, we have to come up with $20,000, when it could have been a $50, $60 a month thing worked into our mortgage. Can't do that now. Now, we're being hit at the end with this $19,000 fee. We have been told on several occasions that the paperwork is not clear by people that work in the city, that have acknowledged that the paperwork was either outdated, out of compliance, wasn't transparent. And then we watched on the 10th, the City Planning Commission meeting, we happened upon it, and low and behold, there is now a checklist for this process that has been created.
It's addressed every single issue that we have had since the beginning of our time trying to pull this permit. Every single issue we have has now been addressed in your checklist and in that resolution.
Every, every single one, like, in some cases, almost like word for word, some of the emails we have been sending back and forth about putting upfront that there are these fees.
Impact fees.
Putting upfront that it's proportional to the size of your house, giving a scenario very close to our own about if you have a 2,000-square-foot house and a 1,000-square-foot ADU, it's going to be charged at 50%. If we had that paperwork when we started, we'd have, we have no argument right now. And we are not asking for $0. We've paid the school fee, we've paid the PACA relocation fee, which by the way, is also not on your paperwork, for PACA relocation. Had no idea that was coming, okay? We paid, I don't know...
We paid the extra money for the...
The...
The title report, because on your application, on the website, there is no thing that says it has to be within 60 days, your title report. The application we received from the city, all of a sudden, has in parentheses that the title report must be within 60 days.
If you go right now and look it up, that's not there. But somehow, it made it onto ours.
Which I showed you in the exhibit.
And sent that. If you go right now and look at, you know, this process as it stands now, I'm telling you, you cannot, there's no way to navigate this in an informed way, to know that you're making a decision that is, I don't know, I don't know what the word is. I'm trying to think of my words right now, because there's a little frustration here, so bear with me. There's just no way to make an informed decision. I mean, that's been our argument all along. And quite frankly, I mean, and I know ADUs is, we listened to the last meeting, and some of the comments about ADUs, and we listened to the Planning Commission, and some of the comments about how unfortunate it is that the state is going this direction and allowing these things, like, we heard the words that were coming out of different places. I understand maybe people don't like ADUs. Get it. Had we known that this $25,000, that ultimately is what it's going to come down to, that this $25,000 is going to be tacked on to what we thought would be affordable housing for my parents who are on fixed income? You wouldn't be dealing with this right now, because we wouldn't have done an ADU, not to this, not this size. I mean, if you wanted to detour us from doing an ADU, giving us those fees upfront, probably would have done it. We're here today because it wasn't transparent, it wasn't upfront. Now, we're being hit with $20,000, $25,000-something dollars total, when you add everything up.
I know there's been said that there is an email to me, or to us, about these fees. I'm telling you right now, I have never received an email, or my wife, at any point during this process, explaining these types of fees.
And I was back with that from my team...
Hang on, just one...
I don't want you to misunderstand, maybe you misunderstood what I said, what I believe, and I won't stake my life on it, that the email that I referred to talked about the base, because you raised, "Well, wait a minute, this code section says this," or doesn't say this, that there was an email responding, indicating that it was applicable to a zone, not A120, but to R1.
If I'm wrong, please produce the email.
As I said, I don't know that that's particularly relevant at this point, anyway.
Do me a favor, I need you, I need you to talk in the microphone, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. So, one of my big concerns on, I've got emails here dating back as January 1, of my personal staff, so I employ people day in and day out to pull permits all across Southern California, asking your building department, pleading with the building department, "Hey, we're into our final steps, we know we're coming to the end, can you please produce our fees so we could inform our clients, hey, this is what we're coming into needing to pay? Can you please tell us what our fee schedule is?" Because it's very known within building industry that there is fees due. There's permit fees, there's impact fees, there's this fee. What are your fees going to be assessed on this project? We can't tell you, we can't tell you. Blank email, blank email, blank email. That we've actually produced out, asking, "Hey, can you please tell us?" The response I got back to my email was, "You're a contractor, you should know how to do that." And I was very, step back, as my staff was very professional, asking the city of Norco, "Could you please let us know what these fees will be?" Because it was very unclear. There's 77 pages of fees that you guys will assess, between signage, building, this, you name it, all the way down the board. Nothing directly stated ADU. There was no breakdown of how any of that went within the 77 pages of fees. The only fee that I could relate back to would be accessory building use permit, which really isn't applicable, but it's an accessory building. That's what we're dealing with, an accessory building, not a single family. That's where we kept going back. What are our fees on this? Could never get an answer, until the Zimmers got a response, I believe about 6 o'clock at night, with a $20,000 bill in front of them, which was a real big bummer.
Sorry. I also just wanted to point out, because we keep coming back to it, the state says we can do this. The state also says you don't have to do this. It also says you can waive fees, okay? And what I find amazing is, I did the tiniest bit of research, and these are just some of the waiver applications, fee applications, pathway to complete ADU, fee waiver, fee type, formulas, Sacramento here, that actually says ADU fee schedule, so that it's clear. All of these, all of these places have a clear pathway and clear fee schedule for ADUs published for anybody to find, easily. That is not the case in Norco. It's not. And I think from the very beginning, it was acknowledged that the PACA paperwork doesn't have a fee on it, doesn't even refer to a fee. Gives you a checkoff list of what you have to do, doesn't say anything about $1,541.
So, again, we didn't know about that fee, until we had gone through the whole application.
But we paid it.
We did the civil engineer, we did the title report, we did the plot plans, we did it all. When we go to turn it in, now all of a sudden, there's a $1,500 fee.
We were told we needed a separate water meter. We argued about that, because code says one thing, we were told, state says this, we argued about that. I think at that point, I did say, I think we should be looked at at 18.30, 0.46, and I don't remember anybody saying... We, we took out a certain amount of home equity loan to cover costs based on our understanding. And we were never, we were, that was taken away from us. The idea that we could, you know, even take out a loan that would have covered this cost and that we would have been able to, you know, pay for it over time. Now, we have to come up with $20,000 when it could have been a, a $50, $60 a month thing worked into our mortgage. Can't do that now. Now, we're being hit at the end with this $19,000 fee. We have been told on several occasions that this, the paperwork is not clear by people that work in the city that have acknowledged that the paperwork was either outdated, out of compliance, wasn't transparent. And then we watched on the 10th, the City Planning Commission meeting. We happened upon it. And low and behold, there is now a checklist for this process that has been created.
Yes, addressed every single issue that we have had since the beginning of our time trying to pull this permit. Every single issue we have has now been addressed in your checklist and in that resolution.
Every, every single one, like in some cases, almost like word for word, some of the emails we have been sending back and forth about putting upfront that there are these fees.
Impact.
Putting upfront that it's proportional to the size of your house, giving a scenario very close to our own about if you have a 2,000 square foot house and a thousand square foot ADU, it's going to be charged at 50%. If we had that paperwork when we started, we'd have, we have no argument right now. And we are not asking for $0. We've paid the school fee. We've paid the PACA relocation fee, which by the way, is also not on your paperwork for PACA relocation. Had no idea that was coming. We paid, I don't know.
We paid the extra money for the.
The.
The title report because on your application on the website, there is no thing that says it has to be within 60 days, your title report. The application we received from the city, all of a sudden has in parentheses that the title report must be within 60 days.
If you go right now and look it up, that's not there. But somehow it made it onto ours.
Which I showed you in the exhibit.
And sent that. If you go right now and look at, you know, this process as it stands now, I'm telling you, you cannot, there's no way to navigate this in an informed way to know that you're making a, a decision that is, I don't know, I don't know what the word is. My words right now, because there's a little frustration here, so bear with me. There's just no way to make an informed decision. I mean, that's, that's been our argument all along. And quite frankly, I mean, and I know ADUs is, we, we listened to the last meeting and some of the comments about ADUs and we listened to the planning commission and some of the comments about how unfortunate it is that the state is going this direction and allowing these things. Like, we heard the words that were coming out of, out of different places. I understand maybe people don't like ADUs. Get it? Had we known that this $25,000, that ultimately is what it's going to come down to, that this $25,000 is going to be tacked on to what we thought would be affordable housing for my parents who are on fixed income? You wouldn't be dealing with this right now because we wouldn't have done an ADU. Not, not to this, not this size. I mean, if you wanted to detour us from doing an ADU, giving us those fees upfront, probably would have done it. We're here today because it wasn't transparent. It wasn't upfront. Now, we're being hit with 20,000, $25,000 something dollars total when you add everything up.
I know there's been said that there is an email to me or to us about these fees. I'm telling you right now, I have never received an email or my wife at any point during this process explaining these types of fees.
And I don't, I don't. Excuse, excuse.
Hang on just one second.
I don't want you to misunderstand, maybe you misunderstood what I said, what I, I believe and I won't stake my life on it, that the email that I referred to talked about the base, you, because you raised, well, wait a minute, this code section says this or doesn't say this, that there was an email responding indicating that, that was applicable to a zone, not A120, but to R1.
If I'm wrong, please produce the email.
As I, as I said, I don't know that that's particularly relevant at this point anyway.
Do me a favor. I need you, I need you to talk on the microphone. I'm sorry.
Not a problem. So, one of my big concerns on it, I've got emails here dating back as January 1 of my personal staff. So, I employ people day in and day out to pull permits all across Southern California, asking your building department, pleading with the building department, hey, we're into our final steps. We know we're coming to the end. Can you please produce our fees so we could inform our clients, hey, this is what we're coming into needing to pay? Can you please tell us what our fee schedule is? Because it's very known within building industry that there is fees due. There's permit fees, there's impact fees, there's this fee. What are your fees going to be assessed on this project? We can't tell you. We can't tell you. Blank email, blank email, blank email. That we've actually produced out asking, hey, can you please tell us? The response I got back to my email was, you're a contractor, you should know how to do that. And I was very, step back as my staff was very professional, asking the city of Norco, could you please let us know what these fees will be? Because it was very unclear. There's 77, 77 pages of fees that you guys will assess between signage, building, this, you name it, all the way down the board. Nothing directly stated ADU. There was no breakdown of how any of that went within the 77 pages of fees. The only fee that I could relate back to would be accessory building use permit, which really isn't applicable, but it's an accessory building. That's what we're dealing with, an accessory building, not a single family. That's where we kept going back. What are our fees on this? Could never get an answer until the Zimmers got a response, I believe about six o'clock at night with a $20,000 bill in front of them, which was a real big bummer.
I also just wanted to point out because we keep coming back to it, the state says we can do this. The state also says you don't have to do this. It also says you can waive fees. Okay? And what I find amazing is I did the tiniest bit of research and these are just some of the waiver applications, fee applications, pathway to complete ADU, fee waiver, fee type, formulas, Sacramento here, that actually says ADU fee schedule so that it's clear. All of these, all of these places have a clear pathway and clear fee schedule for ADUs published for anybody to find easily. That is not the case in Norco. It's not. And I think from the very beginning, it was acknowledged that the PACA paperwork doesn't have a fee on it, doesn't even refer to a fee. Gives you a checkoff list of what you have to do, doesn't say anything about $1,541.
So, again, we didn't know about that fee until we had gone through the whole application. We did the civil engineer. We did the, the title report. We did the plot plans. We did it all. When we go to turn it in, now all of a sudden, there's a $1,500 fee.
We were told we needed a separate water meter. We argued about that because code says one thing. We, we were told, state says this. We argued about that. I think I, at that point, I did say, I think we should be looked at at 18.30, 0.46. And I don't remember anybody saying more than, there might have been a disagreement there, but I can't remember. But ultimately, that was settled because they agreed that, number one, things weren't clear. And number two, that the codes needed to be fixed and that they were going to be in the process of doing that, that they had held meetings about why is this happening? That they had held meetings talking about how the paperwork needed to be fixed and more clear. Okay? And ultimately, we don't have to put in a second water meter because of it. So, you're holding us to one thing, but you didn't hold us to another thing. You acknowledged your paperwork was lacking in one area, but you don't want to acknowledge it's lacking in this other area. And I, I'm just saying, I'm going back to this, I'm like, okay, this is clear. This is clear. This is clear. City of Norco is not clear on this. I know it will be now after March 10th, after that meeting.
If you guys approve it.
If it comes before you and you approve that paperwork, now it's very clear.
But that doesn't help our situation.
It doesn't help me.
Now that we're at the end of our permit stages.
And we have paid the $4,700 in school fees and we have paid the PACA relocation fee once I went into the fee schedule and found it, because it's not on your paperwork. And we have, we, we don't have dispute on several of the items, more than willing to accept those. But these other fees, they are not clearly put anywhere.
Stated anywhere.
In, in my opinion. And that formula, so easy to calculate. I don't know why we didn't get this upfront, like way back.
That could have been done on day one of the permit being.
Like, you saw the size of our ADU. You saw the size of our ADU. You know the size of our house in those applications. It's a simple formula. I don't understand why this was not done a very long time ago so that we could have reversed course or changed. We had money in escrow. We had to put money, half of it in escrow to get in the process because of COVID, to get in the production line. At some point, we had to make a decision and we made it based on the information that we had, which was inadequate at best. But we made it based on, I mean, we know it's inadequate now. At the time, we made it based on what we saw in front of us. We, I mean, we have scoured through this. We have, this is, I'm, I'm pretty sure this is probably not the norm, but this, this is, this is us. This is what we've done, gone through for this process and.
And for a couple that has tried to do things legally.
Yes.
In this city, because there's a lot of illegal stuff. We're trying to do it legal. We're trying to follow the rules. We're trying to take the city's list that was in there, follow it to a T. I've been talking to the city. I've been talking to Andy. I've been talking to Chad. We've been trying to follow every single piece of advice that they've been giving us to get us through the process. That's why we're at the end of the process now. First ADU in Norco. We're at the end of the process. According to what we were told, this is the first legal ADU. Incorrect?
I have an, I have, I have, I have an ADU.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that's correct.
We were told that this was one of the first ones.
Like, maybe since, since 2018.
And it shows on the state that we have no ADUs in this city. That's why I'm kind of confused by that also.
Yeah. Do you want to take some questions or you?
Oh, yeah.
We will take whatever you got.
Would somebody like to start? Gregory?
Good evening. I appreciate you coming forward. Couple of questions, I'll have more later on. If, if I was listening and heard you correctly, when you, you talked about the, the PACA relocation fee, that with the list of drawings you submitted, that you would have had a site plan prepared. And my understanding would be then at that time, let's say that would be a planning review that where this ADU is located on the site plan encroached into the, the primary animal keeping area, into the deed restricted. Are you, am I hearing you correctly that you're saying that you should have known that beforehand?
No.
When we put this, when we did the original plans, we had put the ADU in the back of the property, not understanding what a PACA, I thought you could just move the PACA as long as you had the same open area.
Okay, yeah, it's a deed restriction.
Well, we weren't aware of that. We're just regular residents. Okay?
Let me back up. I'm not trying to interrupt you, but as we go along, the, it's a, the deed restriction should have been, you know, when, when you bought the house, that would show up on your title, that you had.
Well, we, we're not arguing that.
Yeah.
We're saying, we understand that the PACA was there.
All right.
And we understand that we couldn't put the ADU there.
As it was.
But the city didn't tell us, well, why don't you just relocate it? We have a relocation application. Got nothing. We, we researched it and we looked in your codes and everything else. We found a meeting that said, you're able to relocate your PACA.
Okay. This is where I'm getting a little confused, that the staff wouldn't have known that until you submitted your site plan and then it.
Right. So, they rejected the site plan.
They rejected it.
Right, right. And, and at that point, would have went, the, the location of this ADU is impacting the deed restriction. So, you basically have two choices, relocate your ADU or relocate your PACA.
See, we weren't given that choice.
We weren't given that choice. They said, you can't put it there. And that was the end of the comment. There was no, here's choice number two, relocate your PACA. That's why there's a delay, if you look at our timeline. Because I had told my parents, we can't put it back there. I'm sorry, Mom. I'm sorry, Mom. You can't, we can't put it where you want to put it because that's where our PACA is and we, that's what we were told. So, we were talking about, how are we going to place this house now? We don't want their front door facing the back of our house. Are we going to turn it the other direction? How are we going to create separation? Because it appeared we were going to have to put it in the very middle of the property to keep the PACA where it was, because nobody told us option two, that we could relocate it.
And we didn't like that option because we are going to get horses. And I want to be able to look out my back window at the horse stalls.
So, what happened was then I, just because Googled PACA relocation, and I came across an old city council meeting where it discussed it because it tagged it. And I, and I went there and I saw that there was something about relocating the PACA. We shared that information and we found out that we could, but we had to research it. It wasn't given to us as an option. And then the, the form online, if you go and look at the form right now, the form itself, the blank form which we gave you an exhibit on, it does tell you have to do this, 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 and this, but there is absolutely no reference to any relocation fee on that form. Period. There also is no, no reference to your, I never can remember what it is.
Deed title.
The current title report.
Right.
Has to be 60 days.
Right. Yeah.
That was added and given to us.
Okay, so, let's go back to square one. So, what you're saying is you came into city hall and you were just flat, don't interrupt me. Wait a minute here. That your, on, on your site plan, you just can't do it. It's impacting, and we just turned you away?
Yes. That is what I'm saying.
Okay.
That is absolutely what I am saying to you.
All right. So, that was staff that just said, can't put it here.
Correct.
And made no other offer of redo the site plan or relocate the PACA.
Correct.
Okay. So, now your turn.
So, one of the frustrations, and I understand us all being in COVID-19, is building departments being shut down to the public or contractors to walk in and do over the counter exchanges of paper. I appreciate Chad and his staff in engineering, super helpful towards the end of this process. I don't know how many times, end to end of our PACA relocations, back forth, email transmissions back and forth, but super helpful on that end. But when this PACA thing originally came in, it was like beating on a wall, trying to get through. It came back into my office. We look at the site plan and go, okay. And I pick up the phone and go, Mr. Zimmer, we've got bad news. This PAC is actually recorded in the back of the property. We can't move it. It, we've got to take your ADU up between your pool and that PACA relocation. That's what the city option has given us. Not able to sit down with city planners, do any via Zoom, screen sharing, any, any form of technology that we have as of 2021 is a big hindrance within this process. Big advocate down in the county of San Diego, they're launching a program right now, we're test running it with them, to do screen shares. That is team meets with Microsoft, does that now. You get on Zoom, you got a screen share, we can pull up sets of plans and we can talk about these things to make your side more proficient and also the consumer side more proficient. So, that's kind of where we ran into this thing of going, hey, I've got a plan in my office, they've relinquished it back to my office, they don't know what we're talking about, and just kind of ran this weird circle. And unfortunately, it's the time of COVID-19, not trying to blame the pandemic on this situation, but definite big hindrance in what possibilities could have been had on that.
So, it, so when you, you contacted the applicant and said that this ADU is impacting the PAC area, did you suggest that maybe we should downsize the ADU?
The ADU still fit within our restriction area between their pool and the PAC area. We still had room within their property to say, hey, look at this, it all fits. We could do this. Is this what you guys would like to do? Unbeknownst to their research, they go, hey, we could do a PACA relocation. Okay, great. Let's see what that takes to move forward, getting this PACA relocation done.
Okay. So, my next question for you is, you had mentioned you have an, I'd like to see the email that you got from staff that said, the reply was, you're a contractor, you should know the fees, or something to that effect.
I believe it's in your guys' slide also. This would be the last one of January 28th requesting fees.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, where is it?
I don't know that.
I don't think we have this.
I think we referred to the date, but he may not.
Okay, so, where is the, I'm sorry, where, where's the reply?
There is no reply. Nothing back.
Okay. Well, I think you had stated that you said that the reply was that you're a contractor, you should know the fees. That I believe is what it said.
No, that was actually in a full other series chains of emails after some frustrations went out from the Zimmers out to city staff. I was not privy to those emails. They forwarded them on to me. And Mrs. Zimmer probably could speak better on that half than I could.
Okay. So, let me ask you one more question then, and that is, when, when you were first developing this project and, and putting together cost for your customer, didn't you provide a magnitude of fees, a magnitude of cost of the overall project as any prudent contractor would do?
So, we do have a cost breakdown of what all of my company's fees will be. I will never estimate any impact fee regarding any city. I could give you a general idea, but I will never estimate that out due to this exact fact. We could put this exact project right through your guys' city and almost guarantee you at the end of the day, the number's going to be different that we're paying.
That's why it's an estimate.
And.
So, my question is.
Magnitudes?
What was the magnitude of the fees that you provided the applicant?
I provided them with an estimation between a $5,000 to $12,000 guess for what we could see within the paperwork.
So, you guessed at it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that is a, more of a generalization of what I've seen between city of San Diego to city of LA, city of Riverside, county of Riverside, county of San Diego, because I've done these all through Southern California. I know the city of Norco is going to be specific. Each permitting jurisdiction has their own regulations. But at general, okay, let's see at large where stuff comes in. At average, this is where stuff is flowing in. My last one I did down in the city of San Diego, hey, we had a 5/8 water meter. We incurred a $7,500 water meter upgrade charge to allow more fixtures within the residence. Understandable.
So, you, you based your guess on your experience in LA, San Diego?
So, no, that is not exactly what I said. I based my guess on the information that I was able to receive. So, my question to you would be, look at your guys' 77 pages and tell me how the city of Norco would assess accessory dwelling unit within their fee schedules. Here's their fee schedules, 77 pages. And I really got, lack of better words, called unprofessional, unknowledgeable, but yet I work with some of the larger companies around doing these and knowing what we are allowed, aren't allowed to do, within setbacks, without setbacks.
So, who are you referring to unprofessional? Our city staff?
Our, your guys' city staff had called the contractor they had chosen, that your contractor should have known that stuff and more or less is ignorant to his project he is completing right now.
And that's in this email reply?
That would be something that she could speak on because I was not part of that chain of emails.
Is it in this email, Greg?
No, sir. That one came directly out of my staff requesting fees from your guys' staff, saying, could you please provide us the fees we know we're going to have to pay? We know we have to pay something. Can you please provide us that?
Sorry, Greg.
And still could not provide that fee schedule to us. And that, to me, that shows the knowledge of at least my staff doing due diligence, saying, hey, city of Norco, could you please provide us how you guys are going to assess the fees for ADU within the city? And can't get anything back on that. It was very disappointing and tried multiple, multiple, multiple times on it. Because it's well-known, I'm not going to deny that I know there is impact fees. I know it. That's within the industry. I'm third generation. I've been doing this a very long time. Grew up with a hammer in my hand when I was in diapers. I still buy material and use subcontractors that knew me when I was in diapers. Been around, I know there's impact fees. We've been asking from the start of this via phone conversations to begin, to then start backing with emails, saying, hey, what are our impact fees? Until I had approved process, approved engineering, approved planning, approved fire, is when the Zimmers were given the fees schedule of what it was going to be.
Got you. Greg, continue.
Just, I'm just about done because I think you've heard your case for your applicant. One that, if you feel that we're an unprofessional staff and since I've been in this game a long time, but I didn't learn about impact fees when I was in diapers. I would think that it would have been your responsibility or your company's responsibility or your staff to pursue the overall magnitude, the costs of the project instead of you providing just a guesstimate to your, to your customers. The due diligence is on your part. You bid the project. Did you not?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, my question back to you is, how come my staff did not get a reply back at the point asking, what will these fees be?
Can't answer that. Did they stay on them?
Yes, sir.
Did, call the planning director?
So, I ended up, the, finally, when I got an answer to this, I personally had to get in contact with Andy, get that answer.
All right. Then that's. All right, then that's a question then for the city manager. The staff works for him. I don't know what else to ask you right now. It's.
Yeah, Ted.
I think other members have questions.
Ted, I'm picking them because they were longtime planning commissioners and contractors.
I'll go back to my days in planning, that was prior to 2015. And the ADUs, when they came up, we followed the state law when they first came up and it said residential areas and they were specifically talking about the R1s and the R3s. They did not talk about our residential agricultural zoning. That's why it was done that way. You are familiar with our city charter, the city charter here in town? It's been around since 2004, approved. Preservation of Norco Lifestyle Animal Keeping. Okay, that's what it is. That's our city charter. I just want you to understand, okay? That's, and let me finish on this thing. You go through and you look at it and you're talking about accessory dwellings? You're talking about not dwellings, but the buildings? It was Councilman Newton and myself actually were on the subcommittee to fix that mess that we had years ago. All right. There, when I was in planning, we did approve several, what we call temporary senior housing units in town. They were put in there for seniors and upon the end of that, they were removed. Those were before anything such as ADUs were ever thought of. And going through on the planning commission part of it was that we had state law that we were following. The fees have always been there, always been there. And that's what we follow is the state fees because we can't, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, we can't charge more than what the state law allows us to charge. These are standard fees that are allowed to be charged that we have to stay in compliance.
I mean, the current statute regulating ADUs says you may not charge less than $750 and here's how you calculate fees.
Correct. So we're not, they're any different than any other jurisdiction. I'll go back to Andy here. Andy, how many ADUs have we approved in the last year? To Alma?
I'm director because I don't have that number.
Okay. Alma, do you, I know you're hiding back there, here you are.
Alma, could you, yeah, maybe, or, he's perfect.
So the question was how many, well, last year, go ahead.
Okay, let's just, let's just go through. In the last 12 months, how many ADUs have we approved?
Okay, so last year there was four that was issued, we have five there that are currently being built.
Okay.
And overall, we have a total of 21 that have.
21, okay, I just, and out of that 21, how many are junior? If you have that number.
No juniors.
No juniors? Are any of them, most of them are, let's put this way, how many are $750 or bigger?
Let's see here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13.
13, okay. 13, so all those 13, your staff or they've gone to the commission have gone through and have handled those, correct?
Have gone through.
They've handled those applications.
Through, basically through our processing of building.
Processing, great. So, and they've all handled the fees and the applicable things at the same time. Now, based upon what the, and I don't know where your exact house is, but based upon there's a deed restriction, you're, they're probably up in the hills. Oh, okay, somewhere.
Right here off of Six and.
No, they're in A1 zone that was a subdivision that was done not too long ago.
Okay, so, all right, all right, so I know, now I know, okay. So that makes it, yeah, they're off of, they're in, so they have a deed.
Correct.
And we, we have done PACA relocations that I can, a long time, many, we have had those come through our commission, even when I was in planning, we had them, we changed them, correct?
Yes, the PACA relocations are typically handled at staff level.
Staff level, correct.
But when they're initially established as a deed restriction, that's done like through subdivision, basically.
So your staff has handled them and has processed them in the past?
PACA relocations, yes, correct.
And so it's not unusual?
Correct.
Okay, that's why I'm getting out of here, so.
I mean, I can appreciate the line of questioning, but I can only tell you what our experience was.
I understand it, but you, here's my thought. You're challenging our staff and, well, hang on, because your contractor here is, he's challenging the integrity of our staff. And I'm trying to point out the fact that this isn't the first time they've done these. He's come through before and, and I don't, I don't even know your name, sir, you're the contractor.
Chris.
Greg, is it Craig?
Chris.
Craig, okay. Have you ever built, have you ever been contractor in Norco, built anything in Norco before?
My first project in Norco.
Okay. We have other contractors in Norco and it's okay. Most of the contractors that have come through here usually will, they go through and they go through the counter and I know many of them, okay, they do that. Granted, we're not the easiest place to work with because of what we do to protect our properties the way they are, the large lots. And so that's what I'm asking you is, and I go back to the fees. These fees are not unusual as compared to other areas that I looked at and what I've seen, based upon what my city manager and my city attorney is telling me and what I've known in the past. And so when you tell me that you only said, and as you said, between $5,000 and $12,000 for these fees. And they've gone up above that, you know, I'm just saying, this is, these are standard fees and they're going through. And maybe there's some due diligence that should have been done on that part of it. So.
Doing our due diligence as far as looking through these codes, okay?
Okay, and I understand it.
Something different that he's telling me with the zoning?
The, well.
I'm going by just the 18.304.
But the zoning is important because where you live is based upon zoning. What goes on in your areas and where your residences are guaranteed, are governed by the zoning laws that are applicable to those where you're, to the zone law.
You just found that when we did the application, correct?
Yeah, it's your due diligence to build things in there. It's just like it's, do your due diligence to understand that when you brought property, you had a deeded PACA, that the, those are deed restrictions on there, people that have. Okay, I'm just.
They told me we can move it.
Yep.
I have no problem moving. I don't want to take it out. I like the city of Norco's.
Okay.
Charter.
Charter.
I got no problem with that. That's why we moved it.
And I appreciate that.
Yep, put the house back in the back. No problem with that. Now, to get to that point was ahead of. So again, we were going by the codes that were in there. Same with the water meter. We were going by the codes that were in there. With the city or the sewer impact fee, it says right in the paperwork, that cannot be charged, yet on our fee schedule it's being charged.
Okay, is that based upon the size?
No, that's in the paperwork there.
Okay, but was that, Andy, or?
That's based on the application of chapter 18.3 again, or 18.4. Their application is, their application is processed using the state ADU laws.
Okay.
And under those state ADU laws, and you're right, it gives the city the authority to charge impact fees. By the same token, yes, the city can decide not to charge impact fees. You're correct in that. But that's the chapter, that's, that's, that's how the ADU application is processed.
Okay, okay.
Capacity fee, Andy.
Yeah.
Impact fees are one thing, but there's also a capacity fee that's on our, on our list.
I don't see where you're charging that capacity fee.
Sorry, would you, would you, I hate to do this, once you look at that, could you repeat what you just said? I was having trouble hearing you, I apologize.
It's an impact fee, yeah.
What do you want me to repeat?
Yeah, it's an impact fee, Andy, it's an impact fee.
It's impact fees, right? Yeah, I don't see.
No, it says capacity fee, number 3100.
That is correct, but that is an impact fee.
It's impact fees, they're all under some.
Well, that says capacity fee under 3100, sewer capacity fee of $2,800.
Got you, okay.
It's part of the impact fee.
Okay, but in your, in the, in your codes, it says capacity fee, not allowed to be charged. So that's why I'm saying all the inconsistencies for someone that is trying to do this, because we're paying the permit fees, okay, that was totally out of contract. We take care of the impact or we take care of the permit. We're paying for that. That's the reason we're researching all this.
So.
The reason I paid the city, I mean, I paid the school district. That's the reason I paid the money to get the whole thing started, the planning.
The Semitale fee.
Semitale fee. Okay, I paid that out of our check. So we've been paying all the fees for city. That's why we've been trying to do our due diligence, look through all this stuff.
Kevin, I'm done, by the way.
The capacity fee, I'm not, I'm not following.
Again, he's referring to what the, with the requirement of the state law which, based upon which we adopted the ADU ordinance that doesn't apply to them, doesn't apply to their zone. We thought that, as all of the council, most of the council recall, that the original ADU statute from the state said you have to adopt an ordinance and here's what the regulations are, but it referred to single-family residential zones. And so that's what the city adopted. It didn't apply in this city to A120 or A1 zones, which is where you are, and.
Can I bring up one thing, please? And I'm happy to share this if you want, but this is where it gets confusing for me because you're saying that the 18.30.46 does not apply to us, correct? But when I questioned something that was quoted to us, I said, I felt that they were quoting the wrong section, that we should be judged based on 18.3.0.46. And this is what I got back. Thanks for reaching out with your questions and concerns. The current municipal code, chapter 18.36.46 for accessory dwelling units is not in compliance with state law and therefore no longer valid or being used by staff. Okay, got that? I got that. But it doesn't say, and by the way, you're using, that's not even a valid, the valid code for you or any of that. It says.
Again, I don't, I don't know who the email came from or what, or what they thought they were responding to, but it's, but I believe that what it said was, don't look at that because it doesn't apply, because state law changed since we adopted that, the one you're referring to. And so we can't any longer apply it, even if we wanted to.
I.
I guess our bigger issue is then how are we supposed to know?
I understand that, but how, but how would we know that prior to making this, this choice? Because it is not.
Well, that's why you hire a contractor.
All right, well, I guess.
I mean, you're right, if, I mean, if I was building something in my house, I'd be lost too, even though I could read the code. That's why I hire a contractor to, and I appreciate what the contractor's comments were, but that's why you hire a professional to do it. You're relying upon his advice.
Robin, do you have a question? Catherine?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for coming. I can hear the frustration in your voice. I know you've reached out to council member Graham Meyer and myself and we've gone back and forth in trying to facilitate discussion. Just a couple of questions. Andy, do you have the power as the city manager if the Zimmers asked to extend the amount of time that they had to pay that fee? Is that something that the council would have to do or is that something that the city manager could make a decision in terms of allowing that to happen?
I think that that is a policy issue that I think the city council need to make that decision. Staff's role is to collect the fees when it's due. Any other exception to that would have to be made by the city council.
And in those circumstances where fees have either been waived in their entirety, partially waived or time extended, has always been a council decision.
Okay, thank you for that clarification because that was the other piece, just that options that bearing nothing are to waive the fees, to waive the fee, not waive the fees, but to minimize the fees or reduce them or look at extending amount of time for those fees. In the one email that you did pass up, Chris, I did see when it asked for the fees, it looked like it referred, staff referred back to municipal code, which wouldn't have been valid for this. I understand that there is variance with the code. We don't have that state code approved in our, in our city code. When I'm looking at the attachment that's, that's in here with the development impact fee schedule, it states the commercial, office, commercial lodging, industrial, single-family dwelling subdivision. I took all these numbers here, parks, fire, general government facilities, trails, sewer water, streets, storm drains, animal control, public meeting facilities, library. When I add those all up, that's where that $35,002 comes from. So it's not spelled out 35,000, but basically the state law is what's saying that this proportion has to be paid and these fees obviously aren't necessarily comparable with other places that, Chris, you've, you've put in ADUs is my perception of what I see. Those are my questions and my, my comments for now.
I have a couple of questions. So is this owner builder or contractor builder? So he's not the official contractor?
Installing it.
But you guys came in as owner builder, so he's your subcontractor?
That's what we were intending to do, yes. That's why we tried to do all this and that's why no one, I mean, even all the emails back and forth have all referenced the 18.30 or 0 or whatever the code is, the one that's in here, which I guess.
And I'm not trying to be mean, I'm trying to get to the bottom of this. Do you have a license to be an, to be a builder in Norco?
For what?
Do you have a business license in Norco?
In the city of Norco, I do not currently.
And it's not trick questions, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of this.
I know, like, so anytime that I apply as the contractor, I know within, and even if I am not applying for a permit, I still need to obtain a city of Norco business license to conduct or perform work within the city limits. So I know, to be honest offhand, I don't know how many business license the company has right now just because of the vast majority of where we do work, but I do know that as a contractor, I am required to have a city of Norco business license to perform a business within Norco. I know that Norco or most cities will have a checkbox for contractor specifically because we're not doing a retail business or retail sales or different. So it's normally like a standard, you know, 100-ish dollar fee that we pay annually. You could, some cities allow us to pay monthly, whatever the scenario is on that. But yes, I am aware that you have to have a.
Just, I was just curious. So the fees statewide, are they the same? In other words, you have discretion, but the fees for ADUs are statewide, you just go, they're, they vary?
No, impact fees, remember, annually, we go through an impact fee study and every city has different impact fees based upon.
You know what I mean is, we have basically, every city has basically the same things that they will charge impact fees on?
The same things, yes.
Yeah, the amounts just vary.
Yeah, and the amount. Yeah, and the amount, the amount of the impact fee varies, as well as, under the, the only thing which is consistent in terms of state law for ADUs is how you calculate the percentage of.
Right, so there's a list, that's my, I guess my point. And then, just.
And I'm assuming, by the way, that Alma, that all of the, those above seven fifty, or maybe even all of them, paid impact fees. Yeah.
And then the other thing, you said that the ADU, which I got right from Senator Roth, it's a house. It's a house, it's a home.
Correct.
Put two homes in the backyard, and they're going to have impacts if families live in them. And you said it's not really a home. This is, this is a separate unit that's detached, so it would be a home, just so we're clear. The pack of relocation, so actually you didn't have to do the pack of relocation, because you, it could fit where it needed to fit?
Our argument with that is not necessarily that we, we didn't have to, you're right, we didn't have to. My, my argument with it is, our whole process, to me, is that from that point forward, the paperwork that we have to fill out didn't say there was a fee. Once we figured out that we could move it, and the fee came with it, we paid it.
Because it is in your impact.
It's in your fee schedule, and we went through and found it on page, I don't know what's on.
You just didn't know how much it was going to be.
We had no clue, because it's not on that paperwork.
It's not on the application.
So our argument with the pack of thing isn't so much that we had to relocate it to put the house where we wanted, we got, we understood that after the explanation was given to us. It's that the paperwork is lacking.
Got it.
And that, that fee's not disclosed, and unless you, unless they, after they told us there was a fee, which came after we went through that whole process, they said, oh, great, we, you can, we're going to approve the relocation, but we're waiting on your fifteen hundred dollars. First time we heard of it. First time we heard of it. So it's that kind of lack of transparency.
So one of the, one of the, one of the issues, unfortunately, that you've, you've stepped into, just the way I see it, is they passed the ADU laws. We're like the last city in the state of California, by law, you build on a half acre more as an entire city. We understood that agricultural properties were exempt from that law, so we actually went to the trouble, we have a few areas that are residential. Some have minimal animal keeping, some have no animal keeping. Then what happened is, in the wisdom of Sacramento, they changed their minds. And so we are now trying to catch up with those particular laws. I, I personally take exception to the idea that we're not transparent. I think that who you really, this is, what's really indicative of this, is this is the slippery slope to where you can't talk to your council to help you adjust things. Who you ought to be pissed off at is your assemblyman and your senator. What they've done is they've taken away, and, and I, part of the problem you have is you actually don't understand how, what's going on, in a way. And I don't blame you, it's not your fault. But we're sitting here, trying to catch up with laws that are changing. And I have to say, as the son of a longtime contractor, you hired a contractor, and he should have, in my view, forgive me, he should have known this. He should have known there were going to be impact fees in this community. And the other thing is, is you hired a contractor, but then you were owner builder, which creates a problem, because that means you have to sort through this. But he, he, he's, he's an international builder. He should have known that every city is going to have different things, and I don't wish to be mean, but I'm angry with your contractor myself. He should have known. And so you're up here almost in tears, you're breaking my heart, you're obviously upset.
Well, I guess what is upsetting, Kevin, or Mayor? Okay.
Call me Kevin, it's fine.
On the tenth, all of a sudden, we saw what happened during the planning commission, and now it's absolutely spelled out.
Because we're, because we're, because it had nothing to do with you, it's because we're catching up.
Right.
And a good contractor, what a contractor should have done, is he should have known the state of what the ADUs are right now. And honestly, he just described an ADU as a shack, basically. And that is not true. And yes, Norco is trying to protect our large lots, but an ADU, basically, what the state is doing is they're telling us to put three houses on a single-family unit in a single-family neighborhood, which means stupidly, they're erasing the zoning for a single family. Now, on top of that, which you had no way of knowing, is you stepped into an agricultural area. And I totally get that you're frustrated, I completely understand it. But the reality is, the contractor needs to eat this. That's how I look at it. And he's not going to like that. But you, you've misdescribed what an ADU is. You've admitted that you're the subcontractor, not the contractor, and these people are doing all your work for you. You should have known to go and say, okay, clearly, they're, right now, they're changing the laws all over the place. You say you've built tons of these, and the other, the other lie from Sacramento is, ADUs are affordable. They're not affordable, they're going to cost you a quarter of a million dollars to build one. I mean, they're just expensive unless you put in one of the, one of the, you know, prefabs. They're expensive. They're not going to solve the problem that these people are saying they're going to solve. And the impacts are the same impacts as a house. I mean, I feel real, I totally get where you guys are coming from, but for me, your contractor's the problem. He should have known these things. And I don't know, I, I, and I'm with Greg. To stand up here and to belittle our staff when we've built twenty-one, we have a hundred and seven secondary units deeded on properties in Norco. A hundred and seven. And, I mean, this is a, I really do feel sorry for you, but, and I'm not sure, I don't know how I can waive fees, and, 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 I mean, maybe we can look at something, but your contractor should have known this. He should have known this, he should have known what to do. Is there any other questions, folks?
I just, I just want to say one last, one last thing. Number one is, I am happy, as we stated in our, that this is now changing. Just because anyone after this, it's there. It's there, it's clear, okay, I won't use the word transparent if that's offensive, but it's just very clear, it's very stated, it's step by step, that's a good thing. So I'm going to say that. I think it's a good thing, I hope that you guys adopt these new codes, I hope that you adopt this new checkoff list that's coming up, I hope that you, I hope that that process moves forward and that it's there for anybody in the future. And then lastly, you know, I get what you're saying about the eighteen point three, I get it, as you're stating it to me, but I probably referenced that code two dozen times in all of my emails, and what I read to you was just a small part of that paragraph where it talked about that these codes are out of order, and therefore we've been using state codes, but it didn't, in all of the times that I sent it back and forth, I think there was one, one thing that I can find to Larry, who's, works for him, about something like eighteen point four. So many, many times, I took things out of that code, quoted it over and over again, and I didn't get a response saying, don't use that code. That is not the code, in terms of.
Or zoning.
Yeah, I just, that is the part that bothers me a little bit. I, I did hear more than once, you know, we have to look, use the state stuff because our stuff is not put to get, is not in compliance, or is not updated, but not, that's, that's different from, not only is this code, which doesn't apply to your piece of land outdated, but by the way, it doesn't even apply at all, stop, stop quoting it, lady. Stop quoting it, stop putting in your emails and all that, it just really didn't come off that way.
So they, they told you not to apply it several times, is that what you just said?
No, no, no.
No, we're saying that you guys didn't tell us that.
So I, I do have a question. Where, where are you at with your construction? Where are you at? Where are you at?
Pay the fees and we're done.
I mean, you haven't started, you haven't broken ground, nothing?
Well, it's already out of.
Production.
Off the assembly line, and it's.
Manufactured.
It's a manufacturing, that's already done, it's already paid for. We're, we're past that point, that's why we reached out finally, because we have been going through this for a while, and it got to where we had to either pay the rest of it, or stop. And that's why we reached out about a week before it was supposed to go into production, and we thought we got past the water meter issue, and that, okay, no more surprises.
Because they said everything else, you guys will pass with no problem now. We've got all the issues taken care of, everything's done.
We just.
Everything will be approved.
Gotcha.
Which now, everything has been approved, so Andy was a hundred percent correct. Everything's been approved. So we had that stupid.
That last, last bit, but, okay, I mean, I, I am, I, this list of ADUs, I, interesting to me, you know, again, how many of them are proportional to the size of the, it, it is, there's a lot of flaws, you're correct on that, and I plan, this isn't going to end for us in terms of, I don't understand the state of California either, in some, some ways, in terms of, how do you make it proportional? So somebody who has a smaller house, like mine, who puts a moderately sized ADU, we get hit with almost a fifty percent charge. But if I had a ten thousand square foot house and that same size ADU, it would be charged at that rate. That's backwards.
State, that is.
That is backwards, and I agree with you.
Yeah, we're not naming the city of Norco for that.
Understand, we're just as frustrated as you are with this.
It's ridiculous.
And, and what's nice, though, what is nice, is we have a really good relationship with Senator Roth and Sabrina Cervantes, Assemblywoman, they both are actually listening, because they weren't aware of a lot of these things. So unfortunately, there are changes being made, and they're listening. I mean, when the whole ADU thing went down, Senator Roth admitted, and Robin was there, he was like, oh, I never thought of that.
They also didn't think.
And, which by the way, once that legislation's in, which by the way, is unforgivable, he should have known, just like you should have known some things. So where are we at with this, guys?
Well, I.
Do you want, please, continue?
I just don't know, I just don't know how many of those have gotten to the part where they're going to get their fee schedule sent to them, and, and I'm not, I'm not allowed that information, I don't expect that information, but this has just been our experience, and our experience has been difficult.
A miss.
To say the least, and, you know, I will come back to my, the comment at the beginning, I'm appreciative that you even heard our, our case and that you listened. I am happy for the changes that will be made. I still hold that this doesn't feel at all like a fair process to me, and, you know, based on how we had to navigate it, and the number of times that I reached out quoting that code and was not told, stop quoting that code, because it just doesn't apply to your piece of land.
It's the first time we've heard that that code.
I've been working on that, I've been working.
I'd like to make a couple.
Andy, please, and Andy, can you talk into your microphone?
Yeah, I'd like to make a couple of comments before you guys continue on this. I think there is a lot here to digest, a lot that has been talked and uncovered. First, the Zimmers, though I get into this a little bit later in the process, but telling you that the code you're referring to is no longer applicable, that you should stop quoting it, wouldn't have done any good to you, because literally, that, that would mean, we wouldn't process your application. I think it was more productive to say, your application is being processed under the current state code, because that code doesn't apply. The other thing I do want to add, quite frankly, is if you provided information that would have helped you estimate the fees and staff didn't provide that, that is on us. I apologize for that. That shouldn't happen. If information is provided to help calculate fees, we should have provided the fees. I don't want to shy away from that. However, the contractor also do have some obligations to pursue that, to make sure that they do get, in fact, that fee before some critical decisions are made. But I just want to make sure that I, I stated this, two points.
Well, I appreciate that comment, because I, you know, it would have been helpful, it would definitely would have been helpful for us to have known, had a better idea, you know, obviously, but that's where we are, that's where we are, it just, it didn't feel like we knew that we would have changed direction. We can't now. We hear what you're saying, we understand the charter, we very much like the lifestyle here, that's why we came back. We've actually owned a house here since, they have lived here for eleven years, in one of the residential areas. So we're well aware of what you want to keep here, so, and we, we support that. That's why we don't, we moved it. No?
I just want to clarify, the ADU law was passed in 2019? So it's been a couple of years for us to still update our codes.
Well, let's clarify that, because the ADU law means a whole lot of different things. The original quote ADU law was passed probably in 2018 or 19, something like that, but it, but it's, but it's the one that's, that applied only to single-family residential, by its language. And so we thought, okay, we will apply it, since we're obligated to, we'll adopt it, but we will apply it to our single-family residential zones. But then the current law, the one that we're under now, was only passed a year or so ago. I mean, we're not, maybe not even that long, that we're, I guess what I'm saying is, we're not that far behind in terms of.
Thank you for clarifying, yeah.
It is confusing. Is your microphone on?
On the water meter.
Yes, sir.
That, with the, the changes that planning made, that we haven't seen yet, are ADUs going to be required to have separate water meters?
Um, yes, just to clarify, this, the city's water municipal code does require that every, that every individual unit has to have its own water meter. So our own water code has had that for several years, and then we made sure that the new ADU ordinance that's going to be adopted balances that out, and, and will have it, that every ADU has to have a separate water meter.
Okay, and which can just.
That are detached, per the rules.
Right.
If it's an attached unit, you don't have to have a separate one by law.
For detached.
But if it's detached, you do.
And, and we'll be able to jump off the existing water meter so that the future applicant wouldn't have to go out in the street, is that correct?
Correct, it'll be the option of the applicant, they could do a whole new service, or they can do a manifold off of the existing service and add another one.
Okay, and then sewer capacity, we can talk about later, it doesn't impact this.
No, in most cases, we do believe that, and they have to prove it.
Right.
In most cases, if a property owner can show that the number of fixtures with the new ADU doesn't exceed the flow capacity of the existing service, then they don't have to add a new sewer connection.
Okay, or enlarge the existing.
Correct.
Okay, so, now, in this case, did we have additional water meter charges?
Yes, that was the additional information we provided to the Zimmers.
Okay.
And there was certainly a lot of discussion between myself and the Zimmers regarding whether or not the, it was supposed to be there, because again, and I, part of their confusion was that eighteen point three zero does indicate that your, those units do not have to have a separate water meter in code, and that's when we had the discussions about explaining that that code is actually not valid, in that discussion. So for me, looking at that code, which again, I'm not a planner, I don't know who it applies to, other than it applies to ADUs, I just was answering their question in regards to them quoting that section that says specifically here, and we explained to them that actually this ordinance is not in compliance with state law, we're actually following state code, which does state that you can and may require a separate water meter, which is our intent, because again, our water municipal code says that's a requirement. And again, the reason we want it is because of the fact that with water conservation and droughts, et cetera, the state is. and droughts, et cetera, the state is big on having agencies move towards budgets. And then when you can create a separate budget for each dwelling unit, then it becomes a fairer process rather than having one budget that two units or maybe three units will share. And then the costs skyrocket in a drought time period. So being able to establish budgets for separate meters is very beneficial.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation, Chad. And Mr. and Mrs. Zimmer, I wanted, once again, to say, I appreciate you coming forward. And, you know, some things came to light. You used the word navigate earlier. And part of my thought was with that, that as an owner-builder, that's not familiar, to navigate the system through permits and fees and all of that is, it's extremely frustrating. And it, and it is also, as a contractor, when you do it every day, the same frustration's there. So I appreciate what you had to go through with that. All I have.
I just have a question. So what did we base on the not having a meter on?
As far as why we elected to.
Did we base it on the thing we said that didn't apply and said they didn't have to have a meter? Or why did we not make them have a meter? Not that I want them to have a meter, just.
The, the original requirement was to have a meter.
Right. And that was based on?
On, on water code and the ADU state code that allows it to occur. However, because of, it's not a critical aspect, really honestly, and it was, it was a decision choice by me in talking with the city manager, that, that would be a good gesture to offer them in their process, in their frustration and trying to get this done, that we could forego the meter, that requirement on this one case, just, just to really help soften the potential cost or impacts to them for adding that service. It was really just our attempt to try to do something to help them out. We could have insisted on it, required it, but we really just wanted to, again, at that time, the Zimmers understandably were frustrated with the process as, as they explained it to you. And they also explained it to me on a phone call. And that discussion, we just felt it was a gesture that we could make, that was within our authority to do so, versus impact fees are different. And, and that's what we just wanted to make, that good faith effort. So that's a cost they're not having to bear.
How much did you save them, do you think?
Uh, it depends what's options. Most likely, they would have to do a manifold. I would guess, because what they'd have to do is they have to purchase basically a whole new meter, new meter box, and do that construction in the parkway. We saved them a ton of money not having to go out in the street. That would probably be at least $15,000, depending how close the meter is to the, to where they're at, or where the main line is, whether it's close to the house or in the middle or on the other side of the road. Plus the extra piping that would have to be provided all the way to the, to the new ADU. They'll just probably tee off from the back of the house and go there. So there's quite a bit of savings. Again, I would, I would guesstimate at least 15,000, just, just conservatively.
Thank you. Catherine, anything? Greg? Robin, anything?
The only thing I have, the comments made to, in regards in emails to the contractor, I believe in one of the discussions that I had with Mrs. Zimmer, I did ask what the contractor's role was in the process and where the contractor was as far as understanding of impact fees and their potential in the project. So I don't know if that was taken as something unprofessional or inappropriate at any time, but I did ask those questions in one of our emails back and forth. I am sorry that they've gone through the frustration that they've gone through. And to be honest with you, I think Kevin kind of alluded to it. But as constituents of Assemblywoman Cervantes and Senator Roth, I would encourage you to reach out to them or their staff directly. It is very rare for them to hear from individuals and hear the frustration and understand those things because we get the brunt of it at the local level, but we didn't make the rules. We didn't make the policies. We simply are the governing body that have to enforce them and, and have them play out. And when we look at our layers of government, I feel that there's certain times where our assembly members and our senators are protected by the local government because we take the heat. We take the brunt of the residents' frustrations over these policies that are making, that are being made at levels far above, you know, what we have control or say over. And so I, I know that your story is a powerful one. I know that you've experienced an incredible amount of frustration, but it's really at a point where it's not within our control and within our hands. And I would, I would urge you to make an appointment, and if you need the context to do so, to make an appointment with the Assemblywoman and with the Senator to share your story. Because when they hear those stories, in my opinion, that's how policy gets changed. And that's how, when they're listening to these, you know, ideas and proposed legislation in Sacramento, they're gonna think back and remember your story because they've heard it from you directly. It's not Robin calling in and asking for a meeting again to complain about the ADU rules and that they don't work and there's issues. Because they hear from us all the time. And it gets to a point where, well, there's Norco complaining again because Norco wants to be unique, or Norco wants to be separate, and Norco doesn't wanna follow the rules. And so, please, please, reach out and tell your story. Because you're not the only ones. But you're the first ones to come forward. And you're the first ones to share in detail the frustrations and the anxiety and those things that this has created. And I know that you're doing it for the right reasons. So that your parents have somewhere to live, so that they have you to help take care of them. I'm in a very similar situation where we're, you know, planning those things out. But to a certain extent, our hands are tied. And then sitting up here, we also see so many more people that are, are using ADUs and these stories to then just turn around and make rental units. And so it's so hard sitting up here when there's other issues and things that are going on, where houses are being divided up and horrible living conditions and things that we see and hear about that the general public doesn't. And so that would be my main thing. Please, reach out to the Assemblywoman and the Senator to share your story because I think it would have a tremendous impact on the process and their view of current legislation that they have stacks of ADU and housing legislation right now that needs to have a serious consideration for the types of issues that you've run into.
Good.
I hate borrowing you. Robin was, I, I can't say any better. And, and I've been, we've been dealing with this housing issue since the state legislature started it in 2016. If you read in January 2017, the 18 different versions of housing laws, 2018, they decided, oh, we're gonna make some more. 2019, they made some more. And you wonder why our codes are out of date or why they don't comply. It's because we can't keep up with them. And I mean, that's the honest truth. But that's not gonna help your situation. But Robin is right. You gotta reach out to them. I will tell you, in having done two buildings or additions to my house, first one I did as an owner builder, a nightmare. Not just because of the code, the city here, but just because I wasn't, I didn't do my due diligence. And I stopped and it cost me a week's worth of time on my deal. But that's fine. The second one, I learned, I had a contractor that actually knew the city, worked in the city. I had no issues, no headaches. It was so much easier. So, I mean, that's, and I'm not saying that you have to, but it does make a difference in this community or this city, people that understand it and have worked here before. And so that's just, I hate to be Johnny Comely on this, but that's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
So, do we have a, no, hang on, hang on. So, does anybody else have any questions for the applicant at all? Public comments, anybody?
Now is the time to dial in for item 5C for public comment. Your call will be answered in the order received and it will be placed in a queue. You will be, have three minutes to speak. Do we have any callers in the queue? We have no callers in the queue, Mayor. Thank you.
Closing public comments. Recommendations, suggestions, ideas?
Well, I would recommend at the very least a motion to provide flexibility in the timeline of the payment of those fees for the resident. I don't know if there's other ideas on the table we wanna discuss before I can make a
My only comment to that would be that, I mean, typically, fees are paid at, at the time of permit issuance. And that if, if we were to allow latitude or a payment program or some delay in that, that would almost become a policy decision where that, you know, we could be asked to do that by every applicant. Because to, to me, the fees are, obviously, you know, it's a substantial cost. But how do you define that? Is it just gonna be ADUs? Is it residential projects? Is it commercial projects? If you're gonna have a payment plan on fees, especially on larger developments, we've already expended all that money. So I'm, I'm, I'm not supportive of having a payment plan or extending any further movements on payments.
Do I hear a second to Councilperson Alamon's motion? Hearing done, dies for lack of second. Do we have another suggestion?
I'll make a motion to deny the request of the applicants, to deny the request for approval of impact fee waiver for Mr. and Mrs. Zimmer.
Discussion?
No.
Councilmember Grendmeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes with Councilmember Alamon voting no.
Moving on to number six, public hearing. Order of public hearing, staff presentation, council questions of staff, three, open public hearing, A, 3A, public speakers in favor, against, neutral. Four, closed public hearing. Five, council discussion in action. Moving to 6A, Code Amendment 2021-01, Ordinance Number 1065, first reading, City of Norco.
It's Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, this agenda, item 6A that you have before you is Code Amendment 2021-01. And this is an ordinance of the City Council to adopt Section 15.120, electric vehicle charging stations, to the Norco Municipal Code, to establish requirements regarding the expediting permitting of electrical vehicle charging stations to comply with state law. So what you have before you is a recommendation for approval of Ordinance Number 1065, for approval for the first reading, and to subsequently schedule it for a second reading. So I won't go into too many details. It's, it's a pretty, pretty straightforward. It's basically to be compliant with state law. And with that, I will conclude and answer any questions. Thank you.
Does anybody have a question for Alma?
I do.
Ted?
You know, and this is not picking on you because I know you have to do this because the state says you have to do this. What we're seeing as part of the energy program is resource adequacy. I notice that you have in here, and is this the state that says you don't have to do a sequo?
This is, yeah, in compliance with state law, yes.
Amazing. Because, again, this is gonna go throughout the state. And this is not upon this, makes sense if I put it this way. Somebody has to power all of these or has to buy the power for all of these, the energy. I don't know how we're gonna do it. And the sad part is, and this is no reflection on you, if all these that are gonna get put up, get put up throughout the state, somebody's gonna go turn the switch on and the light's not gonna come on. Because there is not enough power in this state, as we have done, to do all these if they all come up. And it's sad. And this is not on you, Alma, on this ordinance. But somewhere along the line, and this goes back to Sacramento, in the, in the California Public Utilities Commission, we have got to draw a line. And it's sad that they threw the, that it doesn't require a sequo. And that you don't, I mean, there's not even a negative declaration in here that says, oh, we got plenty of power. God, there isn't. I mean, I just went through this when I, my TNAO thing. They're gonna put electric cars and have charging stations over there, Corona, with a project plan for all these charging vehicles like Ubers. And, and it's just crazy. So, that's all.
Any other questions? Greg?
Alma, just curious, this ordinance was required by September 30th, 2017?
We're catching up.
We're catching up?
We're catching up.
Brian, when we put the two charges in front of City Hall, where are we with expenses on that or usage? Or have we tracked that as far as?
Yeah. And, and we started off until we got it established and got our fees, because we had to play around with the fees. Because then we got complaints that we were charging too much. So then we adjusted and did kind of a survey of all of our fees here. And so basically, right now, they pay for just about their electricity and that's it. They do not produce revenue.
What type of usage are we getting?
When we reestablished at first, because we had this delay before we started, we were getting lots of use because it was for free. And then when we adjusted our, our thing, and then we got complaints saying that the city should.
Now you have to put coins in it?
Yes. The, the emails I got was, you should provide this at no charge at all to the resident. Or anyone, because they don't have to be a resident to come use it. But, so now we're in that marketplace. So you're seeing, you know, our number of users is probably two or three. We have a couple that are regulars. And they charge and, and I would say, but probably, I, I notice in myself and on the usage, about four or five users a week. And I don't see what's going on in the weekend necessarily, but about four or five during the week.
All right.
And we see them, when they're showing up, where I, is later in the evening. They come and then they can sit and charge. Because even though we have quick charges, it's about 30 minutes for a complete recharge based on the unit that's charging up, how big it is.
Okay. Okay. Good. Thanks.
Thank you, Catherine. Robin, any public comments?
Now is the time to dial in for item 6A. Please dial 951-582-5557 now. Do we have any callers in the queue? No callers, Mayor. Thank you.
Closing public comments. Any other questions for Alma? Comments? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
To adopt resolution 2021-08.
Right.
I read the wrong one. I'm already ready for the next one.
Got the trees.
I'm adopting trees.
No, you're a god.
And that's not even-
Catherine's tired.
I am. Apologies. I make a, I would like to strike that motion from the record and I would like to make a new motion to, for, to approve code amendment 2021-01, ordinance number 1065.
Councilmember Alaman?
Yes.
Member Gremeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
On principle, no.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton? Mayor Bash?
No.
Motion passes with councilmember Hoffman and Mayor Bash voting no.
Moving on to seven, this hearing was continued from city council meeting February 17, 2021. Order of presentation continues. Order of public hearing, staff presentation, two, council questions of staff, three, open public hearing, 3A, public speakers in favor, against, neutral, four, closed public hearing, five, council discussion in action. Amendment to fiscal years 2020, 2020, 2024, capital improvement program, CIP, budget to add, quote, tree planting project, unquote, to measure our fund, public works director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll try to make this brief as possible. I know it's already late. For the prior meeting, two meetings ago, we had a discussion about a tree grant program. We got a grant from Cal Fire that basically outlined that we agreed to plant 1,200 trees. From word of that grant, we tried to develop a program to see how we would plant those trees, what's the requirements, if any. The big discussion that we had last time was whether or not we would require, and one of the stickler points for council, their concerns about was planting trees in areas that didn't have water, which would result in, which was part of our proposal, to require or provide watering service for a year to try to help that tree establish. From that discussion, it was a question whether or not it would be more effective based off the dollars that were proposed in our program. And I'm going to jump to that real quick. So this is what we originally proposed as part of our process in developing a program that basically outlined that we would plant or purchase 1,200, we'd purchase 1,200 trees. And we did an RFP process. We got quotes from various vendors to do the service. They would plant the trees and then there would be a choice of whether or not there would be trees that need to be watered because there isn't any water in front of, say, a residential area and they don't have dedicated irrigation and they're not able to provide it or unwilling to provide it, but they want a tree. Or maintenance without watering for all those areas that basically where there is dedicated watering in a residence or potentially in parks or LMD parkways where there's existing irrigation. Then as I indicated before, the two biggest issues that we're bringing back, that we have slides for that and they're in your packet, is other options. Because of the dollar amount that's required from the city, which was $397,000, and we're recommending using measure our funds. And I do want to highlight the reason we believe measure R is the appropriate place to fund this, is that trees are infrastructure. They are assets and we do maintain them annually. So we spend money annually on maintaining our forests. So we viewed these as infrastructure. That's why we felt this requesting money from measure R was appropriate. Now, we do understand that obviously, as council discussed two meetings ago, there's some apprehension towards using measure our money for this project, which we understand. But so the question became is, number one, which I think there was somewhat of a consensus, but that we should probably only do a program that mandates that there has to be watering, whether it's in the city facility or on a residential property, that people should be willing to provide the water if they want a tree. Because that would automatically kick out $320,000 of costs that we potentially might have to pay. And then the other scenario that was discussed, and I'll show you that one next. So this was that alternate option where we plant the 1,200 trees, but we make it 100%. You have to have watering, whether it's a facility, city facility or residential property. So therefore, there's no maintenance with watering in this formula. It's 100, it's 1,200 trees are being purchased, 1,200 are being planted, and 1,200 are being maintained, meaning when they go out once a month to each tree, make sure it's properly positioned, that stakes haven't broken, it's still, you know, any pruning needs to be done. They'll go out and do that. And so that's that potential cost for alternate one, if we go with that scenario. Basically, it was, the project totals 300,000. The grant is 243,000, basically. And measure R, whatever funding source we ultimately use, would be about 57,000. I do want to highlight in your packet, it does show as far as one of the requirements for the grant is we have to provide basically $82,000 in matching funds. Obviously, our cost in this scenario is we're not even providing $82,000 of like services. So we can make that up in like time that staff provides on this project in management. So we can count all our hours in doing this project to make up that difference to get to the $82,000 mark. We can demonstrate that we can basically spend it in order to make sure we comply with all the requirements of the grant. So this option plants 1,200 trees. It does use, in this, our request is use 57,000 for measure R, whatever source you elect to use. And then we would use our own staff time in tracking it to make up for the 30,000 that we need to show that we've spent in total, aggregate, at least $82,000 of either physical work or staff time. So this is that initial alternate option that you asked us to provide. The second one is what if we only provided just the trees to the folks that actually signed up for it? And as we indicated in the past, basically, there's only about 200 people initially that signed up for the program, another 60 signed up once we got rid of the watering requirement. And we still hadn't even gone through and reviewed the properties to find out even if they could have a tree, meaning, do they have any issues that there might be on the trail side and there's only a two-foot parkway and we can't possibly do a tree there because it's not going to function there, et cetera. So there's still some work we need to do to find out if the tree can actually be planted in front of their homes. So the number could drop. But the question was, what if we just spent money, forgot about the grant, used our own funds, whichever source that might be, and just provided trees to these folks with the understanding that you have to water it. We don't maintain it, we can walk away, or we could choose to maintain it. In this scenario, we said we'd still maintain it as far as inspecting it each month. And by the contractor, we'd go out and make sure it's properly staked, et cetera. But we're not watering it. In this scenario, basically, you'd be spending, if we assumed that 200 people got a tree, you'd spend $50,000 using the contract amount and price that the, that we got from the contractor we're recommending use, which is WCA, which is our current tree maintenance contractor. We could take care of those 200 trees as just a single site alone program using city funds and provide them a tree for basically $50,000. And so those are the two options we came back with to have another discussion on, maybe where you want to go with developing a program. So we can do either or, plant all 1,200 trees, which is alternate one, and what we spend is just under $60,000. Or we can just focus and spend 50,000 and just take care of those 200 residents that may want one. Again, I do want to highlight that the 1,200, again, you're looking at probably 1,000 that we have to find other places than residents, you know, because obviously there's a requirement it has to have water. So that'll be working with parks to find any and all locations where we can put trees. Because in most of the cases, it's going to be difficult, you know. But we're focused on LMDs that have watering and is active and putting trees there, parks, any potential medians that have watering, et cetera. So we will have our work cut out for us to plant 1,000 trees as far as finding locations. But again, we think we can do it. It's just going to take some effort to not, just throw a bunch of trees in one place and it's a big mini forest. We want it to look right. We want to look, we want to make sure that it accentuates what's out there and doesn't just become an exercise. So with that, I'd be happy to hear your feedback and answer your questions you may have. I hope I brought back the information you were hoping I'd bring back as far as alternates and ideas. If not, we can certainly try to think of some stuff off the cuff. Thank you.
Counselor Alaman?
I would love to start. I think that, I think that, my perception is we have an agreement that we want to plant trees. So which of the options is going to work? There's a big concern with the original option with cost from both council and residents. So for me, I'm going to throw that option out. When I look at the other two options that you brought back, what I have heard from staff is that we can place 1,200 trees and we have a need to plant these trees because so many have been cut down. Now, we can't put all the ones that were cut down exactly back where they were because of the stipulations with this grant. But that's something that we can continue to work towards and find other ways to kind of rebuild that urban forest. So because, you know, staff is recommendation that we can plant 1,200 trees, I think they add so much to our community, that option one, where we only plant trees where they can be watered, the cost is $57,000 from measure R. It's about the same as only planting 200. So to me, why not use that grant that we have and beautify our community? The one thing I would, what I would add to that is that we advertised, the first time, how many people signed up? About 200?
About 200, yeah.
And then we advertised, you don't need a dedicated water source, and we got about 60 more. So I would say that we should honor those residents, if there are residents. We know some, not all those 260, right, will qualify because they might not all be in a parkway or so forth. But if they don't have water and they are part of that original 260, I would recommend that we honor that and we just honor or water those, pay to water those trees. So I did some simple math. Say it is all 60 that don't have a water source. I'm one of them and I do. So if I get a tree, I already know it's going to be less. But times 400 is $24,000. If we add that to 57, it's about $81,000. So that would bring the total cost, you know, not to exceed $82,000. Probably less because there won't be that many people, I don't think, in the end who don't have a dedicated water source. But I would like to honor what we advertised to our residents who signed up in good faith to receive a tree. So I would support that option for those reasons. And I'd be interested to hear what my fellow council members think.
Robin?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, Councilwoman Alaman's comment, just the 60 that signed up, I don't even know whether they are offering water or not. I haven't even looked at the information. I know they've signed up. I haven't, I don't have the data to tell you if it was 40 that don't have water or 20 that did.
Right. So I just did the conservative estimate, which would be all 60, assuming that it's going to be less.
I just want to make sure that I didn't give the impression that those people didn't have.
No, I'm just saying 60 more signed up and we said, hey, you don't need water. So if we just make the assumption, none of them do, this is what the additional cost would be. I still think that's a reasonable cost, $82,000 for the 1,200 trees.
Robin?
Chad, I did have a question and I might have missed this when we discussed it the last time. But on page 14 of the agreement, number 1C, it says that we're going to require street encroachment permits. And I don't know why we would require that. Oh, it's a boilerplate thing. So that would, so that would not be required? Okay. You're giving them the plot map of where they're going to go? Okay. Okay. And then just one other side note, because I feel like I missed it last time. On the tree list, there's two trees that their lifespan is 20 to 30 years. And I would just request that they be removed from the list. When we think about all the maintenance and upkeep, 20 years doesn't sound like a long time to me. And I think about, you know, a lot of the trees that I look at now have been here my entire lifetime so far, which is in excess of 20 years. But when we have other trees on the list that are 50, 150, there's one that's like 400 or 500 years, I just think it's a better investment. So if we can make sure whatever we're doing is not in that 20 to 40-year range, I would certainly appreciate that. And those are the SCE area trees, number two and number three, the lemon bottle brush and the bronze loquat trees. That's all the questions or comments I have at this time.
Thank you. Ted?
All right, Chatty. Got to get your calculator out. You're in alternate option one. You're telling us under measure R, we have to contribute 57,000 2027, correct? That's to pay for this program. And then on the bottom, it says per requirements, we got an additional 82,000, correct?
Not an additional. It's, we're obligated to spend a total of 82,000 of our own funds to match the grant.
That, so is that 82,000 plus the 57 or 80? Okay, I'm just making sure it's, so it's an additional 30,000 on top of that 57?
Yeah, as far as the note, it basically says that per the requirements of the grant, we're obligated to spend at least $82,000 to get the grant money.
Okay, so-
So with 1057, we would do in-kind like work, which is my hours, Kelly's hours.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just going around here, look, getting at the actual cost. So you could have said that the total cost of that thing would have been another 30,000 plus on top, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it's actually, that 57 is just measure R, but it's actually going to cost us 82,000.
Correct.
All right, okay. And I'm looking at how the WCA, they just planted a bunch of plants up there at the park. And I will tell you, if they planted my plants, like my trees, like those guys, and you're paying them $50, that's a shame. You're getting ripped off. There are no amendments with those trees. They went out and they, the ground that they pulled out, and that's rocky ground, we actually gave them sand to put in there with no amendments. And even in your paperwork, it says here, there are no amendments, no tree additives. The shock on those trees, we've had two or three that aren't going to make it. Out of just the 10 they planted, 10 or 12 of them planted. That's not planting trees. That's not an arborist. Those trees expect to live. You need to do something with the soil.
Right. But again, keep in mind, there is a one-year warranty on those trees.
I understand.
So if they do have that shock and they die off, they replace them.
Maybe it's cheaper for them to replace a plant, but you're going to have a continued problem. Because some of the areas we plant these things in, the soil's so poor, you've got to help that tree out. We found that out at Coridon, didn't we, Greg? How poor they were.
And again, we looked at that, but then you get a much more complicated RFP, which is going to drive the price up, where you're doing amendments for every location. And so we just wanted to simplify it, say, because again, part of this is going to be working with the contractor, say, is this a tree that should be planted in this area or we need to choose a different tree? Or should any tree be planted here? Because it requires amendments and that's an additional cost.
Well-
Prepared to do that. And again, we wanted to simplify this RFP.
Yeah, but you're going to-
What level of amendments are required? Because every place might be different.
You got a 15-gallon tree that needs all the help it can. And you just transplanted it. And like I said, I'm not picking on WCA, but if that's their quality work that they threw on there with no planted, Brian's staff has got to go out and buy plant stakes, a bunch of them, to keep these trees going now. Because as I said, they just threw them Because as I said, they just threw them in the ground.
Right, no, in our...
And I'm, I'm just, if you're paying $50 to have them, oh, $150 to plant them? No. Yeah, $150 planted per tree? $50 purchased, 150 is a per plant?
Well, I guess I want to make sure I'm trying to, when you say amendments, I'm thinking soil amendments. But they're, they're staking it, they're, and again, in this case, it, they took off. The $200 amount that originally was there was to have a deep root system. So we lowered the price to 150 by not putting that in because it's going to be in places where water exists versus where you're just watering it one couple times. So they are staking it and as far as planting it, but they're not doing any soil amendments. So it is going to be staked. They have to maintain that staking, you know, for the entire year and warranty the tree.
Okay.
But there's no soil amendments.
Yeah. Like I said, up here in our soil ground, unless you want the roots to grow, they're going to grow better in sand than they are in hard clay. But I'm just, I just don't think, I think that's a lot of money for individual plant, especially after what I've seen them do up there. So that's my two cents on the WCA. But I just was curious about the money. So thank you.
Greg?
Okay, Chad. So you touched on it a little bit and this is what I had highlighted. On the first cost, the $640,000, you show planted trees at a unit cost of $200.
Correct.
Then on option one and option two, planted trees, different quantities, but the cost, unit cost is 150.
Correct.
Okay, why's that?
Because in that, those two scenarios, we, we know and absolutely know that they, you have to put a location that's going to be watered. We assumed in the original scenario that every tree was going to require a deep root system because potentially we didn't know if there's going to be water or not. So we wanted it there. But we knew, when we physically went out there and we knew there was water, we could eliminate 50 bucks off of it because they're not going to put a deep, deep root watering system. My original assumed the worst-case scenario as far as cost. But if it turned out 600 of them had watering, then it would basically, each one of those 600 be reduced by $50 because we wouldn't put in a deep watering system because it's got a dedicated irrigation. So we assumed the worst cost on that in the original proposal.
So when Ted was talking about amendments, I always thought when you plant a tree, I throw a couple of tablets at it and call it good. Are we not, we not even doing that?
No.
Nothing?
Because again, they take the obligation for that tree for a year. So if it's struggling, they can choose to add any amendments that, that help to make it survive. But if, if a year is up and we determine that tree is dead or unhealthy, they have to replace it.
So with that logic, then we've wasted all that water for a year? Or the homeowner has wasted the cost and the water for a year?
Not sure I understand.
By them not including amendments or anything like that? And it, it kind of seems to me like you're making a statement like, well, you know, if the tree dies in a year, they'll replace it. I watered the damn thing for a whole year. I've spent my time and money trying to keep the thing alive.
Right.
So that seems a throwaway.
And I don't, I guess, I guess I don't understand. I'm missing the, what you're trying to explain to me.
I'll make it much clearer. I'm going to water a tree for a whole year and if it doesn't make it because we didn't throw in some tablets or a little bit of fertilizer, then it kind of seems like we're nonchalantly saying, well, it's the contractor's problem. He'll replace the tree.
Well, it's, it's a solution if it occurs. But again, if you want to add amendments like that, we can, but your price is going to be driven up.
Oh, come on, those tablets are nothing.
I was just saying, if it wasn't included, they're going to add that in, I would assume. Again, I haven't asked them.
Okay.
And, and they may say, yeah, that's not a big deal. I don't know the price of that type of amendment.
Can I ask a question real quick? Because it's related to Mr. Newton's comment. Exhibit A agreement, page 13, under it, where it talks about the watering requirements, it says supplemental vitamin treatments to promote root growth and tree health as needed.
Yep.
It's in the contract.
There you go. I didn't even, I totally forgot about that point, so...
Thank you, Robin, for reading all of this.
So one thing too, Greg, is that they're going to look at the, the location. And if you're going to plant a tree and they, their arborists are going to take a look at it. One of our big problems is granite.
Right.
And that's a big issue for us with planting trees. However, I would make every assumption, if it's in the contract, that they're going to take a look at that soil and maybe even say, that's not a good place to put it. We need to find a better place. Because no matter what, we do, it's going to fail. And then adding any amenities to make that tree a healthy specimen would be, fall back on them.
Right. Okay. So my other question is, long-term, what do you budget for the annual cost of maintaining these trees in the future? What would be like a yearly number for the 1,200 or the, the 200 trees?
As far as physical maintenance of the tree, they would go into the five-year maintenance program. And then the trees would not likely be trimmed for at least five, each five years, depending on the cycle they're in when they're planted. I'm not sure how much the watering cost would be because obviously that would depend on the location and where they're located at, whether it's a parkway or it's in a park. And that would be determined by either the, for those who are operating the LMD and/or park maintenance if they're watering the tree. So I couldn't tell you how much the cost would be. Because I don't know if they're getting dedicated irrigation there or if they're getting irrigation that comes from the sprinklers because they're planted in the grass. So their, their roots are going to capture the water that's, where the grass is absorbed, the water's absorbing in the grass. So there's different factors I couldn't guess as far as a dollar amount that might impact parks in the water cost.
Now, what about just in the maintenance, like trimming trees, like say, after five years? Is there like a unit cost or anything that...
Right now, our unit cost, I think, for trimming is, in their contract, is $61 per tree.
Okay. So...
And this is their, WC is...
Sure. So $61, say you, you plant that 1,200 trees, not saying that you'll, you're going to prorate this all out, but after, after five years, you're going to spend $61 times $1,200? Or 1,200, excuse me?
Right. So about $73,000 total additional maintenance that you're adding over a five-year period that you would, depending on what cycle they're in.
So 15 grand a year over the...
Basically, yeah, just under 15.
Okay, so, and where we have, have we allowed for that anywhere in this budget?
Not in here because we'd make it part of the tree maintenance budget, which is, which is part of the operations budget.
All right.
And you are going to have to cycle a little bit on that because some trees have faster growth than others.
Right.
And then you're going to have to do sucker cleaning and that type of thing. But, you know, even with that, probably five years, you're going to have to start putting them into the program.
That's all I have right now.
So Catherine, what was your recommendation?
Option one, can we show option one again? Which is the 1,200 trees utilizing the grant. Measure R contribution is $57,000.
Eighty-two thousand, actually, right?
Well, we have to spend $82,000, but Chad is saying that they can bill some staff time, right?
Yes.
Into that, so that I would count for some of it. And my, my addition would be to honor anyone who signed up for a tree in between, when we, when we advertised that you didn't need water, that if they need water, that we pay that additional watering fee for those residents, which would also add a little cost there, but we have to meet $82,000 anyway. So it wouldn't exceed $81,000 and we have staff hours, so...
Thank you. I personally have been wanting to plant Ingalls and there's a lot of place I'd like to see some trees in some of the parks. Public comments, Dana?
Now is the time to dial in for a public comment for item 7A. You will be placing a queue and your call will be answered in order received. You have three minutes to speak. Please dial 951-582-5557 now. Do we have any in the queue? We have no callers in the queue, but I do have one email that was just received. Good evening, Mayor Bash, councilmembers and staff. I believe all Norconians will agree that trees complement our city and add to the aesthetics and environment of our town. However, the additional cost requested tonight to cover the added expenses that were not anticipated when the city accepted the $242,000 grant from Cal Fire to plant 1,200 trees is concerning. If the city decides to move ahead with this project, the council should be ready to explain to the residents of this town, why are you deciding to spend over $330,000 for each of the 1,200 trees beyond the grant money? Your city staff has stated that less than 300 households have shown interest in a free tree to be planted in front of the residents. Your staff also said that they could earmark another 400 trees for city use. That leaves a surplus of 500 trees. The 700 earmarked trees are cheaper at approximately $175,000 without accepting the grant money. Allocating $397,000 of city funding to purchase plant and water and maintain 1,200 trees for one year as proposed is imprudent and fiscally irresponsible. I strongly urge the city council to reject the amendments to the capital improvement program budget for the tree planting project as presented in its original format. However, I propose you approve alternate option one. Option one, at a cost of $57,000 to the city's more manageable, accepting the grant, planting the required number of trees with residents and the city having the water, the trees themselves will cost the city less than $50 a tree. Option two allocates the purchase of 200 trees with no grant money and would cost the city $250 per tree. Option one seems to be more viable choice that allows the city to accept the grant, receive the trees and spend less of our city funds. This resembles fiscal responsibility, human value to the city staffers that spent countless hours soliciting the urban forestry grant from Cal Fire to improve the landscape of our city and to all Norconians. Respectfully submitted, Dr. Seagrid Williams. There are no further comments.
Closing public comments. Bring it back to council. Discussion in action.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the alternate option one.
Second.
With the addition of honoring those residents who signed up if they do not have water.
Double second.
Before discussion, I just, because obviously if you move forward this, part of this is modifying the resolution to allocate the funding. I do want to clarify, or at least, obviously, if, if we accomplish the other 60 or so folks that may get a tree and we water it, and obviously that's going to add the $400, I'm also going to recommend we include for those 60 folks, if they need it, the deep watering system, so the extra $50, which is only $3,000 total needed. So by my numbers here, $24,000 for the watering and another $3,000 for the deep watering system, on top of the 57, basically gets us to about $81,000.
And that's very, that's a conservative estimate, assuming every single person needs water.
Yes, yeah, that's conservative. So I would recommend if we're going to approve the resolution, it's to modify allocating, instead of $397,000, it would be $81,000. And then 1,000. What's that?
Societ Finance.
Oh, well, that's true. Yeah, yeah, Dana's, no, Dana, Lizette. Lizette's pointing out that I think it'd probably best if we at least make the number 82 because that's the grant match report amount. And that way, when we report it and ask for reimbursement, we can clearly show expenditures or like in-kind hours that equal $82,000 and our budget number we're putting in matches that, plus that. So that just makes it easier for the budgeting process. So I guess I'd amend that to say the resolution should be $82,000.
Okay, so for the motion to, do I adopt this resolution with alternate option one, not to exceed $82,000?
Second.
Of measure R funds?
Yes.
And we'll modify the resolution so it cleans up the data because obviously it told, it indicates in here the budget will be $640,000. It won't be that number. We'll modify it so it's a total of 82. That plus the Cal Fire grants will modify that number on the resolution that's ultimately signed.
Correct.
Just, Kevin, just, just real quick.
Ted?
Brian, just going to help you out on your parks. In the parkway, right?
Yeah.
I just want to make sure. Okay.
Yeah, we've, we've already identified.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Councilmember Alaman?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, we had the...
Go ahead, Greg.
Correct. Not to exceed $82,000.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we good?
We're good.
Councilmember Alaman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous?
Moving on to eight, city council, city manager, staff, communications, Lizette, anything? Alma? Sam? City attorney? Nidia Koro? Brian?
Yeah, of course. Just a reminder, we have moved into the red tier. So we're on our way. And looking at that, if we can stay in there, in that, in the same numbers for the next 10 days, then we would probably move into the orange. And our youth sports groups are starting to go practice and everything this week and we're just waiting to get their game schedule. So they're excited. There are a lot of modifications and rules we have to follow, but Michelle and her staff have done a great job of working with them and they're all on board. So we're going to see people out there and start enjoying our parks again and kids playing, which I think is a really healthy start. Some of the discussion today was a new modification to now allow, under modification, indoor activity related to sports or recreation. And so...
That's the contract for WCA to do.
I make a motion to accept proposal from West Coast Arborists for professional services to plant and maintain 1,200 trees for 12 months in a war professional service tree maintenance contract for a not-to-exceed cost of 324,973 and zero cents.
Second.
Robin was quicker.
Under discussion again.
Yes.
So take out of that number, isn't the grant number?
It's 82,000 plus the grant number of 242,973.
You got the 82.
Yep.
Plus the Cal Fire grant?
Yep, plus 242,973.
Okay.
That should be 324,973 is the total expenditure we'd make between Cal Fire and our 82,000.
324 and change?
Something like that.
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed, there's not a contingency on that.
Okay.
Do a vote.
Councilmember Alaman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Moving on to eight, City Council, City Manager, Staff Communications, Lizette, anything? City Attorney? Andy O'Quoro? Brian?
Yeah, of course, just a reminder, we have moved into the red tier, so we're on our way, and looking at that, if we can stay in there, in that, in the same numbers for the next 10 days, then we would probably move into the orange. And our youth sports groups are starting to go practice and everything this week, and we're just waiting to get their game schedules, so they're excited. There are a lot of modifications and rules we have to follow, but Michelle and her staff have done a great job of working with them, and they're all on board, so we're going to see people out there and start enjoying our parks again, and kids playing, which I think is a really healthy start. Some of the discussion today was a new modification to now allow, under modification, indoor activity related to sports or recreation, and so we're working to see what that's going to come out, and we'll probably get a, we'll probably get information next week out on that.
Norco football starts tomorrow, right?
Yes, I believe they've, they've been kind of practicing already under the guidelines, but they are starting up.
Okay, Chad?
Just two items, just for the public that's still awake. I want to remind folks that we are, dump day is upcoming on April 10th. That'll be from 8:00 PM to 12:00 PM up at Ingles. We have already sent out inserts in the utility bills, and continue to do so this month. We will certainly start advertising it in top stories leading up to that, but that's where folks can bring all their materials that they want, that's non-hazardous, in their truck, not a trailer, and you can come as many times as you want, but it's your opportunity to get rid of some of that stuff you really don't want at your house anymore, so I encourage people to use it. It's been very successful over the last couple of years. It will include shredding and electronic recycling, but we will keep pushing that over the next couple of weeks until April 10th. And I also want to thank Mayor Bash for talking with the county board supervisors again about Terry and honoring him, it's really, really appreciated, thank you.
Been outed. Dana?
Nothing to report, thanks.
Councilman Newton?
Wanted to wish you all Happy St. Patrick's Day. I have a limerick, but I think I'm going to wait.
Councilperson Alaman?
Yes, so this month marks a year since we in Norco have been affected by the pandemic, and in Norco, 26 of our residents have passed away from COVID-19. So I'd like to ask, with the support of my fellow council members, to look into some sort of simple and temporary memorial that we could do to honor them. I know some other cities have done some in front of community centers with flags or with rocks, but to commemorate and to honor those neighbors who are no longer with us and their friends and their family. And I'd also like that we, to ask that we close the meeting in honor of those, of those neighbors. So I'll make a motion to ask staff to look into some sort of memorial for the residents of Norco who passed away from COVID-19.
I think you and Councilman Hoffman are on the same page. Robin?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, you're right. I think we have to, you have to agendize it.
Yeah.
Yeah, so-
If you're going to agendize it Catherine, you can motion agendize.
Motion to agendize, thank you.
And I'll second that, and Brian, I was going to do this tonight anyway, but I was thinking about the Healing Garden, is a possibility for the erection of some kind of a plaque or monument.
Can we do that there?
In that, if you can check with, that's our part, correct?
Yeah.
So if you could check to see if that's-
Do you know what the Healing Garden is? Yeah.
Yeah, if you could check with the, and the, trying to think of that group, the tree group that was up there. But I think that's a fitting, that's a fitting place for the 26 people.
So is that a second?
Yeah, that's my second, I just wanted to give him some direction.
Dana?
Councilmember Alaman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Anything else? Robin? Ted?
Yeah, just want to remind people, on March 29th is National Vietnam Commemorative Day. Hate to see it delayed, a meeting, because nobody's watching us now, but hopefully they will. We will do a virtual, and then I'll have the memorial open up there that day to make sure and have the correct flags flying in honor of us Vietnam veterans. Also, I'd like to agendize, upcoming is to research, or to look at the acquisition of land or property adjacent to Ingles Park. I have been, as you know, I'm a member of the Pro Rodeo Cowboy Association, also follow Farm Bureau, and all the fairs and rodeo grounds and things like that. They're losing properties adjacent to them, into their facilities. If we lose land around there that's available now, we won't have a fairgrounds, we will lose our equestrian event center up there. So I would like to see us look into the possibly acquisition of that property adjacent to there that we've been using for future use of the city.
Second. Under discussion, anyone? Dana?
Councilmember Alaman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gremeyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Bash?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous, thank you.
Anything else Ted?
Nope.
I just, I have two things, question, have we set up the meeting for Robin and Catherine to meet with the mayor of Riverside?
Yes, that has been set up for April 5th. There was an issue of changing of staff at her office, so the first meeting got canceled, and they're rescheduled for the 5th.
I want to suggest that you guys also talk about, because I signed a letter before her Santa Ana River project, the habitat issue along with the other issues, but that, I think that's a really important thing that I would like to be part of. And then, I just have a question, could we in the future, Andy, could we actually have the correct council and the, is this, I mean, I know, this just makes me, it just makes me a little, I mean, so the next one. I know, it just bothered me, I was like, well, and then also too, I mean, Alma's not on here, and Lieutenant Ilya, and, I don't know, all right, well, okay, you guys are way ahead of me.
The previous-
So hearing nothing else, we're now going to close this meeting in honor of the, in remembrance of the 26 Norconians who have died of COVID-19. Moment of silence. Meeting is adjourned.